Welcome, everyone, to the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners Budget Workshop, April 11th, 2017. We will start with our budget presentations, and then, following the presentations, we'll have some public discussion. So far, we have three cards. Who's going first, Mr. Chairman?
I'm going to go first, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is actually the second of your budget development workshops for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. What you're receiving right now is the revised schedule. Yeah, it's the revised schedule. And so, I've corresponded with the charter officers, with the courts, and have had to move some of the workshops around, and so, this is a little different than previously presented to you. But in total, you'll have six workshops covering all of the county departments and services and the charter officers, as well as the courts. And so, today's workshop begins with the general government, Parks and Recreation, and Housing and Human Services. And so, for those folks who are in the audience that are here on the CBO funding, that'll be under Housing and Human Services. Again, as I advised you earlier in the year, that process needed to come before you in a timely fashion because a number of agencies are waiting on your decision with regards to that funding, so that they can build their budgets. And that's an extended process in terms of the application and the review process. We are excited today to sort of shuffle the lineup, and we're going to let John go first because we have a proposal that we believe will get you from the 20 miles per year of resurfacing that you're doing currently, and it will take you immediately to 55 miles per year. And remember that the 55 miles per year is the sort of benchmark that John believes he needs to reach in terms of being able to arrest or stay the backlog of buildup there. And so, we have a proposal on the table for you, and I'm suggesting that you take three actions at the end of John's presentation to effect that proposal. And of course, Frank will work on developing that and bringing that back to you as we get further into budget development, if we can't bring that back before the end of this month there. So again, it is a proposal that takes the board from 20 miles of resurfacing to 55, and in 2022, it takes you to 61, which is obviously a tremendous increase in what you're doing in terms of resurfacing roads there. You still will have a tremendous backlog of reconstruction and capacity, and we'll talk a little bit about that as John gets into the presentation. And so, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right with you, we're going to let John go ahead and present, and then we'll go to the general government.
Mr. Denninghoff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Just by way of background, very quickly, this is really, in a way, a continuation of the presentation that I made on March 9th last month. And so, we'll see a couple of slides that look pretty similar to that, and I'll update you and remind you about a few things as we go along. So, that March 9th presentation, one of the principal or core issues or concerns associated with that was the fact that we were doing less than 55 miles a year in resurfacing and have been for quite some time, particularly with respect to recurring sources of revenue. The result of that sustained lack of resurfacing has resulted in a pretty large backlog of resurfacing needs and reconstruction needs. And the total, combined total of those two is about 734 miles as of the end of this year is what we project we will have. And I'll give you more information on that again, but you may remember that one from the last month's presentation. The reason this is pretty important is because if you do not do the resurfacing in a timely manner, then the deterioration of a road will evolve to the point where resurfacing is no longer an option, and you have to go to reconstruction. And reconstruction costs four to seven times the cost of resurfacing. And to put that into perspective, the numbers that you're going to be seeing, we sort of nominally use $110,000 per mile for resurfacing. Five times that is what we kind of use for our planning, and what we base most of our numbers on here today would be $550,000 per mile for reconstruction. And so, you can see that it doesn't take very many miles of reconstruction to become pretty overwhelming. In any event, so that's what we're going to try to do here. I'm going to present a plan or an approach that might be able to at least address the buildup of the backlog, as Stockton mentioned. And what we are hoping to do will eventually not only eliminate the backlog buildup, but slow, though not entirely eliminate, reconstruction backlog. So, you see, this slide is taken directly from the presentation from last month, and I call it the pretty slide, but it's really an ugly slide because what it does is it reflects -- the colors are pretty, but it reflects a really serious situation. You can see in -- we've got all of the county's roads included in this area underneath this curve, and the condition of a road starts out very good with a PCI, Pavement Condition Index, it's at 100 when it's brand new, and over time, as it ages, it slides down the curve and gets down to pretty close to zero or failed condition. Once it gets to about an index number of about 31 or lower, then you are a pretty serious candidate for reconstruction. And every road's a little bit different, but that's pretty much the target number. And when you're getting close to it, then you're at risk, and that's what the orange area is. Well, it's orange on my printout. It looks different up there. And then, the yellow is -- resurfacing is required, but it is -- it's not at risk to go to reconstruction in a short time. And this difference in cost, you can see, we've got 145 miles in the current backlog under reconstruction. The cost for that, we estimate at $86 million, almost $87 million. Here, at the at-risk category of resurfacing, we've got 400, so it's not quite four times what's in reconstruction, and the cost is $46 million, so it's almost half. So, you can see what the impact of falling into reconstruction is. The idea with resurfacing is, is we want to catch them before they fall into reconstruction and return them up into the blue area, and we need to do that at the rate of about 55 miles per year in order to keep them out. So, the good news with the plan that we're about to show you is that we think we can get to the 55. But I don't want you to misunderstand. That doesn't mean that that number at 145 is going to stop growing because there are so many in this yellow or orange area that, at 55 miles per year, some of them are still going to get past us and fall down into the red area. If you're a quarterback and the defensive line is rushing you, they're putting the blitz on you right here, and they're going to get you. And so, it's going to fall into the reconstruction arena, so that number will go up. But the rate at which it goes up is going to decline dramatically from what it is doing today, if we can get to that 55. So, that's what our planned sort of goals are, to get to that 55. To do so, we need to -- well, it went crazy on me. There we go. We need three actions that are required in order to do that. And what we're looking to do is try to bring funds to bear for resurfacing in 2018 and then sustainably beyond that, and that's what our goal is. Now, one of the ways to do that that we've thought about was a way to manipulate, if you will, the bond debt service for the constitutional gas tax bonds. They are due to be paid off in 2021, and currently, we are paying -- I think previously we said it was about $3 million. It's about $2.92 million per year in debt service. So, the thought here is, is to have an internal loan that would then reduce the interest rate that we're paying in comparison to what the bond debt service is, which is about 1.43%. The internal loan would be at the rate that the interest or the growth that we can get with the interest accrued from our investment programs, which is about 0.88%. So, we get a little bit of an advantage there. Stretch it one year from three years to four years, and what that'll do is there's a little bit of bond debt service savings that are there, but what it really does is alter the cash flow a bit and makes a little, nearly $750,000 a year available for the four years that we would pay that internal loan back. And at the end of the four years, then we return to the 2.92, now becomes fully available and to go to resurfacing. So, the idea then, take that $750,000, put it to resurfacing for those four years. You'll see that on the spreadsheet that's on the next slide. So, that's sort of step one, is internal loan and stretching the -- at a lower interest rate and stretching the payments, just one year. The second idea was to take the $6 million, which I, on March 9th, I told you was available for allocation purposes, and allocate it for resurfacing, basically divide it by four for those four years so that we can do it in an orderly manner, and it comes out about a million and a half dollars a year then for those four years. So, that would be applied to resurfacing. And then, the third element is to go ahead and allocate at least $391,000 a year and go in perpetuity for resurfacing from the general fund. So, those two or three things added together get you to your 55 miles, and I'm going to kind of go through that now.
John, I mean, on number three, the allocation of the 391, that doesn't require a cut or a reduction to any other program or service, and so, that's within the existing revenue stream because there are a number of expenditures that are happening this year that won't be happening into the future. So, that's a very doable 391 from the existing revenue stream.
Okay. So, what I wanted to do was walk you through this spreadsheet a little bit and help you sort of understand just a little bit about it. I did -- I want to point out that this sheet had a small error in it, which I discovered last night, and I corrected it this morning, and you should have a revision of that. If you don't have one that has red numbers on it, then you may not have the right one. I think that was in your package of materials.
Let me catch up with you, John.
Okay. And what that correction did was it lowered one number in 2021, and I redistributed that through the four years, and it basically, it's a rounding error is what it boils down to, but I didn't want to misrepresent anything. So, if you look at that spreadsheet, 2016, last year, 2017, this year, and we've got MSTU funding at 635,000, and that continues all through the entire plan and would continue into the future. Last year, we didn't have 1.26 million in general funds that we do this year, and we show that continuing into the future. On March 9th, we showed that we were going to be able to have a recurring source of revenue from the gas taxes that would go to resurfacing of one and a half million dollars. So, that starts next year and continues into the future. And then, here's the 391,000 that Stockton and I were just talking about. The next column represents the change in cash flow and savings that are associated with the internal loan, which would go for four years. At the end of the four years, we would have paid off the internal loan, and so, now the cash flow goes up to the full amount of the debt service that we're currently paying on the constitutional gas tax. The next item is the $6 million divided, as I said, is about a million and a half a year for the four years. And what that does, that brings you up for a total, starting next year, of 6.03. You divide that by the 110,000, and that brings you 55. So, you get to the 55 next year. But what we have then is, in 2022, when we get the full 2.92 million, we lose the 6 million at that point, it's exhausted, but our total count then goes up to 61 because our total is now actually larger in 2022 than it would be in the four years prior to that. So, let's look at what happens to the backlog, which is the second to the last row on the spreadsheet. Currently, as we said, we've got 734. If we hold 55 in resurfacing, that matches the need for each year. So, you would add 55 each year, subtract 55 each year, so your backlog remains unchanged. And that's what you see on this spreadsheet. We hold it 734 for four years. Then, it begins to drop by the difference between 55 and that 61, which is six, so you can see that it's going down a little bit. Now, that's just a modest thing in a sense, that we're holding it, and then, four years, five years from now, we're finally starting to see a decrease. But I'm going to tell you from my perspective, as I've watched the backlog go up and up and up, this is a huge difference. If this was your bank account, you're finally getting paid more money, you know, you got more money than you got a month, and it's -- things are getting a lot better. So, it's a first step, I think, but it's a really important step. What it does, though, is it means that for every one of those roads that you resurfaced that you wouldn't have resurfaced without this plan, that road would have eventually gone into reconstruction mode. And so, it's not $110,000 that you're saving, it's the difference between 550,000 and 110. So, you're actually saving $440,000 for every mile. If we don't do the plan, that's what the bottom row shows, and if you just, you know, you'll see that it goes up and up and up and up if we don't do this plan or something similar to it. But then, it starts to kick in, and we start to get some advantages finally. But it all evens out and equalizes at 2022, and the difference is 72 miles. We're 72 miles smaller backlog than with the plan than we would have been without the plan. So, you take that 72, and you multiply it by the difference between 550,000 and 110,000, 440, and that comes up to nearly $32 million in costs avoided. So, that's the big advantage of this sort of an approach. I will tell you that the early -- the process of doing this internal loan would involve the early payment of the bond and get it paid off. There is a penalty associated with that, it's $114,000. $114,000 is $114,000, but compared to nearly $32 million in savings, it's pretty small. And the actual cash savings that we get are equal to about half of that $114,000. So, we think that's a pretty important aspect of it. Oh, I did want to mention, you know, when I showed a slide similar to this on March 9th, I pointed out, and I want to point out again, there are some assumptions that are associated with this. It assumes that the funding remains constant. In other words, nobody starts taking money away from us to go to other things besides resurfacing. It does use 110,000 as a nominal cost, but every road is a little bit different, so not every road's going to cost 110,000 per mile. And there's no allowance for any inflation associated with this. So, clearly, inflation is going to be there, it's real, and so, we won't be able to perform quite this well, but it's the best thing I've seen going yet. So, I'm kind of excited about the idea. Four main benefits, aside from the $32 million of avoided expense. The combined effect of all three of the options or all three of the actions is that we get to the 55 miles as a major accomplishment, starting next year and not, you know, four or five years from now. It immediately eliminates the growth of the backlog and the resurfacing backlog, and it does slow down the rate of the growth of the reconstruction backlog. An added benefit is, is the road conditions will improve compared to where they are today, and that will realize real benefits to the public as they drive on those roads. Two things that are not done, Stockton already mentioned it, that it doesn't eliminate the reconstruction backlog. That is a very, very large nut, if you go think back to the pretty but not-so-pretty slide, the colorful one. That's going to take another major sort of effort. It also does not address capacity. The only thing that's working on capacity right now in terms of funding that's been allocated or dedicated is impact fees that have been re-implemented. There's not much cash flow in that right now. There may be soon in the future, but it's not coming in very much right now because so many projects were able to get in under the wire before the re-implementation of it. The focus for the resurfacing, if we do this plan, has got to be in those orange roads. If we do much in the way of reconstruction, then we're going to be spending a lot more money, which will be leaving less for resurfacing, and that means there's going to be a lot of roads that need to be reconstructed that we would be leaving alone. And that, from a political perspective, I recognize is a very difficult thing to do. From a financial perspective, it makes all the sense in the world, but it is -- that's what we have elections for. So, with that, I think I'm completed with my --
Go to the next one.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's actually, the three actions that are required are listed on the screen there. And I would also say that the additional caveat or flexibility is, are the best available financing plan to -- financing scenario to implement this plan? Because we may figure out that we can save the 114 if we somehow can allow those internal sources to just simply pay, make the bond debt payment and not retire it early there. So, give us the flexibility to sort of play with this before we bring it back to you in its final form. Comes back in its final form because I think you have to do a resolution to pay off the gas tax, and obviously, you have to approve that resolution for the internal loan there, and then give, it'll be Frank, direction to, when he brings back the balanced budget proposal, to include that additional 391 in general fund transfer to the roads there. And so, we would respectfully request that you approve those three actions with the caveat that allows us to bring back the best available financing scenario.
Do you want us to take a vote on these tonight?
Yes, sir. I would -- I want you to take a vote on all three. You can take one action on all three, and then, the clerk will just note that our best available financing scenario.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. With the $6 million, I mean, the way we allocate between the cities and the county our gas tax is by cities, but it's also by population, and I believe that's what we need to do on this. $6 million needs to be by population, split by district, and I think that's the fairest way to go with it. I mean, I've got over 120 miles of roads that need to be paved. I know you do, and each one of us have a lot of roads, and it really relates to the unincorporated population, and that's what I'd like to see in this amendment, I mean, into the motion, and we're doing it just the same as the cities do.
Mr. Tobias?
I had questions. I mean, I'd like to work on that as we go. Would you rather continue with that motion or ask questions?
Well, let's keep our comments right now to his suggestion.
Okay. I think if we were going to take that approach, we would need to look at how that would impact, you know, your chart. Obviously, the -- what do you have? The orange ones are not equally spread across the county commission districts, I would imagine. Is that a fair assumption to make?
I don't recall the actual proportional relationship there for each of the districts. That's an easy number for me to come up with, but I don't have it right off the top of my head.
My idea, and I have no idea how that impacts County Commission District 3, but would we use the $6 million as the precious $6 million to help the roads that are just in the cusp of that orange district, so we can get the largest return on our investment, whether they end up in Commissioner Barfield's district or Commissioner Nardi's district or my district? But I think we need to look at need before we look at geography. That would be my suggestion.
Well, you have to also understand that, you know, let's talk about how many roads each district has. D1 has 375 miles. District 2 has 255. District 3 only has 112. District 4 has 216. District 5 has 139, and for a total of 1096. So, really, the one that have the most roads are D1, D2, and D4. And they also have the highest population, too, which means you have more wear and tear on roads, you have a lot more roads, and, you know, the fairest way to go is the same way we do it with the cities, the way it's done. And that's what I believe we -- and that's how I think we should do it.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I would imagine that that's also going to correlate with the roads that need it the worst, is my guess, because we have a lot of roads with a lot of damage. So, I would support that myself. I think it probably end up being the same way also. I did want to mention, I think this is brilliant. I think its money management is at its best. I just want to commend you guys for coming up with this plan to stop the bleeds. I just had to throw that in real quick, too. So, kudos, guys.
Commissioner Nardi?
And I would disagree with that assessment. I would defer to county staff and the experts in the industry to tell us exactly which roads are most traveled, because there may be roads in even the smallest district that may have a lot of travel. You would have those numbers, you would have those grades on those roads, and I think we need to go with priority versus, you know, territorial lines, because my district goes from Indi-Atlantic to southwest Palm Bay, and I hardly think we need to get, you know, where most -- because then you could argue that with everything. I could say to you, your MSTU is this, or, you know, in District 1, they get $3 million in Edbed's funding, so I'm going to make her -- I'm going to try to take from this area to try to make it fair. I think to be fair, we go and we repair the roads and we maintain those roads that need it the most, even if they aren't primarily in my district. I think that's the smartest and most fairest option.
Chair.
It's the most responsible option, anyway, because those roads will fail if you don't address the ones. If D1 has more, you know, damage in their district, I would hate for us not to give her enough funding, say, if she needed more. I think that that's not the responsible thing to do.
Let's talk about the history on how that happened. You know, years ago, before any of us were here, the Heritage Parkway, which, right or wrong, local option gas tax was put away, money was put away for that over the years, which took away from the opportunity to do the maintenance on the roads. That's $24 million they put aside. Again, right or wrong, I mean, I'm not saying that, but that's what put behind a lot of this maintenance, and it was in those districts. So, we're in this position now, and a major contributor was that. It's my belief. So, what I'm saying is, you know, we need to start right now. We need to make sure that we're equal across the board. I have a number of roads that need to be done, you know, all of us do. And so, that's why the fairest way And so that's why the most, the fairest way to go is do it by population, or you can do it by the percentage of roads, number of roads. But I believe we need to do it that way. There's a lot of reasons why we got to where we are, and, you know, again, people will say the same thing about us 10 years from now, too. But we need to be aware of this, that the fact is, from what we do now, we need to do it equally across the county. We need to make absolutely sure, as we can figure other ways to get more money, then we can bring that in. But, you know, we got to do where we can, what we can do. And population-wise, is the fairest way, you know?
And I hardly think that this commission, this current commission, should be punished or we should be responsible because previous commissions decided to allocate money for the Heritage Parkway, which, oh, by the way, will not just benefit District 5 and Mr. Tobias's district, but will benefit the entire county.
Not saying that. What I'm saying is, it's a...
You're the one that brought it up.
I brought it up.
And that's okay that they've allocated those fundings, but I don't know how anybody could argue that you don't take care of the roads that need it the most, because everybody...
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
I live in Palm Bay, but I spend sometimes most of my day in Melbourne. And so I would say that you get the roads that need it first, before they wound up, wind up in the reconstruction phase, because that is, as Mr. Denninghoff said, over half a million dollars a mile for us to fix a huge, a bigger problem then, and then we're all standing here scratching our heads, saying, well, why didn't we repair that when we had the chance? So, I mean...
Commissioner, wait, wait, wait. Sorry. Commissioner Pritchett would like to weigh in.
I'll wait just a second. I'm thinking about something.
Commissioner Tobias.
Thank you. I would just like to see if we could direct Mr. Denninghoff to look at the need and give us a proposal, and then look at the equity argument that Commissioner Barfield raises. We may be arguing about the same thing. So I would like to see those two proposals, so we all could, you know, come to an agreement. Because right now, it may end up absolutely equal, as Commissioner Pritchett said, but disagreeing on something that we don't know how it will play out probably is not going to, you know, benefit anyone. And is, Mr. Denninghoff, is that something that, you know, given the information that you currently have, that you think you could get to us in a period of time as far as the highest need versus, you know, the highest need in each, I guess, equally in each County Commission District?
And, you know, John has, the index is the condition, the concrete assessment there. And so, there are going to be plenty of roads, you know, you could probably argue this argument after May 1st, separate it out from the financing plan. John comes back to you in workshop on...
27.
27. Don't know that he'll have something ready then, but that's perhaps another workshop, another discussion for the board. And so, John may need more time than 27th to tell you where the roads are in terms of the index. But again, it just seems to be something that can be taken out of the specific action we're requesting this afternoon.
Well, I respectfully say that, no, I'm going to keep coming back to this. It's based on the population. If you have money that's available, it needs to go strictly by the districts, just as we do it to the cities, the same way, it's consistent. So that's where I stand, so.
Commissioner Pritchett.
I think I'm probably in agreement with that. Here's my reasoning why. I've got 65,000 in unincorporated population. I have 30% of the population in District 1, taxpaying population. I've got 34% of the paved roads. I think, as Mr. Tobias stated, it's probably going to come back that way. So if we need to work towards this, I think I'm going to end up supporting that path, whether it be by population or roads. I think it'll end up being the equitable solution. But, I mean, we've got a lot of roads in District 1 to try to maintain, and we have a lot of taxpayers.
So we need a motion for that? Well, we do. But I think we need to go in the direction that Mr. Witten suggested, that we pass the resolution for an internal loan to pay off existing constitutional gas bond debt, and then on March, I mean, April, what is it, 27th?
April 27th is when the Public Works Department's going to be before the board to present our budget, which I'm struggling to get done. So this would be in addition to that.
So, on April 27th, will you be able to give us a rundown of the roads per district?
Can he talk budget on April 27th, and then you all can decide? I mean, you have, you have time to decide how you're going to apportion the dollars there, and so...
That works for me. Okay, let's, do you understand what he's saying? We'll pass this, and then we'll discuss the divvying up of the dollars at a future date.
I'd really rather not do that. I'd rather vote right now that we go ahead and do it by population. I really would.
Well, then, let's have two motions. Let's have a motion for the internal loan to pay off, and then we'll have a second motion for the distribution.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, for number one, for an internal loan to pay this off, given flexibility for them if they need to, working on payment back and forth on that.
Mr. Chair, can I ask some more questions? Based, I was asking questions on the comments of Commissioner Barfield. Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Denninghoff. Was an assumption made, you mentioned assumptions, and I always appreciate that. Is assumption made on this that there will be no new roads constructed? Obviously, you know, if new roads are constructed, eventually, they will need maintenance. How has that been factored into this?
We did not make an assumption about the growth rate of the inventory. I can tell you that it, while we look at the number of houses and we see a large number of houses, when you look at the actual miles of roadway that we get, it's actually fairly small. The, so it, I'm not going to, no, everybody's road is significant, but when you look at the total count of it, it doesn't add a whole lot. I think in the last three or four years, I think we've added about four miles of roadway. So it just doesn't factor in, in terms of these sort of high-level planning-type efforts. Clearly, if a road needs to be resurfaced and you've run out of money, I get the question all the time, why did you stop? And it's, well, I'm out of money. So the, and that's the answer, but, so, in specific, no, we did not account for that, but I don't think it's a significant issue. Clearly, when they're built, they don't need to be resurfaced, so that's a, you know, it's going to be something down the road, but it will have to be dealt with eventually, no doubt about it.
Thank you. Second question, and I appreciate you projecting this out to 2022. Assuming the 55 miles, and I guess up to 61 miles in 2022, that looks like when we turn the bend. My question is, when do we meet the responsibility, and in what year with these projections? I'm sure you projected it out. What year do we actually hit the status quo, where we're up to the level that needs to be in order to maintain our current infrastructure?
If you, if you mean, did I calculate out what happens if we just stayed at that level?
Yes, sir.
With the backlog?
Correct.
The, I didn't actually calculate it, because it's a very long time. It's a very long time, and I just, I just didn't, it's going to be beyond my career, I can tell you that.
Okay. So in other words, in order to deal with a backlog in your or my lifetime, we need to exceed the, eventually exceed the numbers that we have right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, these numbers, these numbers are going to get you to the maintenance. This doesn't touch the backlog and the capacity.
Not until 2022, at least. We're slowly getting there.
To elaborate on that, there, in the March 9th presentation, right at the end, I presented what I call the barrel diagram. And it's a modification of what was produced for the Blue Ribbon Committee. And being passed around the room right now is, is the, it's a print of the slide that I presented last month. And what it shows is what it's going to take to take down the entire backlog. And if you look in the lower, I think it's the right-hand, lower right-hand corner, it tells you that in round numbers, you're going to need about $15 million a year for 15 years in order to take down that backlog. What we're talking about here is taking care of the growth of the backlog. So, and there's a big difference. So if you think of it as a loan, and the backlog is the principal, and the growth is the interest rate on that loan, we're taking care of the interest rate. What we're not taking care of is the principal. And that's a big, big number, and that's why it's just going to take a real long time to do it, 15 million.
So the backlog is approximately 225 million.
And one final question, and thank you for looking at the debt service. I understand we're extending it one year. If we were not to extend it that year and continue down the current path, apparently, we would not be subject to the $114,000 prepayment penalty. In 2021, we would have, instead of the points, almost three-quarters of a million, we would have the full 2.92 million. My question is, if we, I'm concerned about the motion. If we were able to find three-quarters of a million dollars in, you know, the existing budget, even if you assume that district, or, sorry, the departments don't grow and you just allocate the additional cap in the CPI, that should more than cover that, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars. My question is, would it make more sense to find that $738,000 in general revenue currently instead of extending our debt another year? So we don't have access to, I mean, that amounts to $2 million less than what we would, you know, potentially have in the year 2021, if we could find those resources in the current, in the current budget, or in the, sorry, in the upcoming year's budget?
Well, let me talk budget. Yeah, and the caveat that says best financing scenario covers that, because you don't know what your expenditures, your expenses are going to be until all budgets are in. And so I think if you leave the motion that covers best financing scenario, then Frank is able to go back and look for more dollars beyond the 391,000. That may make more sense. It may get you to the 61 quicker. This plan obviously gets you to the 55 right away, and then the extent to which you can pay off even earlier gets you to the 61. So I think if you just leave your motion where it says, he'll go look at, if there's a better arrangement, then he can look for the additional general fund dollars.
But to follow up on that, assuming the CPI sits at whatever, 1.24, 1.26, assuming that, you know, we decide to go to where the cap is, don't we know at a minimum, we will have not only the 300 and whatever, 91,000 additional dollars plus enough to cover that, you know, 746,000?
You don't know, because you don't know where your taxable values are going to be. You don't know if the sheriff is going to walk in and say that inmate healthcare is costing you an additional $2 million next year. And so, and so until all of those expenses are known, till you know where your taxable value is going to be, I think you can't say that 1.26 gets you a certain amount. You just can't do that until you get at least the preliminary taxable value from the property appraiser.
Is it fair to say that we expect that number to increase? As I've met with a property appraiser, that property values are going to increase across...
It is fair to say property values are increasing.
Is it fair to say that we have the ability, when the sheriff comes in, or anyone for that matter, and says that they would like to receive more resources, to say, thank you very much, but we have the ability to prioritize those resources? And we decided, we, instead of prioritizing the resources to, you know, whatever the department head or the constitutional office wants, that we would like to prioritize to roads? Do we have that as a body? My understanding is yes.
You absolutely do. I don't know if you want to exercise that today, sir.
My understanding is that we're taking away that ability by providing, by extending a bond, or the payments on a bond within an internal loan an additional year. That's very, that's very serious, when we extend payments on a bond an additional year.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, we're paying off the bond, we're taking an internal loan that's four years. And so, the bond is retired...
With a penalty.
The bond is retired, all bonds are retired. If it's, if it's not at the call date, they're all going to be with a penalty. And so, you're not taking away that flexibility. You just don't know what your flexibility is at this point. So, so the bond is extinguished the moment you take the internal loan and pay it off, obviously with the penalty. And then, as you get further into the summer, you'll know what your expenses are, and you may very well have the additional 700 and some odd thousand dollars.
And one more question. You've spread out the $6 million over four years. Can that be front-loaded in order to hit that, you know, $55 million, or, sorry, 55 miles a little bit sooner, and to not, you know, pay off that and then extend it with an internal loan?
That's part of what we want to look at under the other, or better financing scenario. So, yeah, you can look at that. I don't know if it works, if the numbers work out, but certainly wanted to go back and take a look at that.
And would, sorry, another question. Would we need to, if we were to vote for this motion, Mr. Chair, Mr. Stockton, would we need to then have another motion if we were to retire that bond and take that internal loan? Or would that then be up to the discretion of yourself or Mr. Barfield?
It's all, it's all going to come back to you as a resolution.
Okay.
For both, I think, that comes back to you, to actually pay off the constitution and to do the internal loan.
I'd like to point out one other thing. We don't know yet what the mandates from Tallahassee will be. That's another one. Right now, as you know, there's a lot of stuff being kicked around, so there's a lot of things you just don't know.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Pritchett.
I believe also, as we go through this, if we end up with extra funds, that we can pay off this internal loan quicker, too, and that would speed up the mileage. I'm actually, I'm actually kind of pleased that we found a way to cut the bleed here with this. I was hoping we'd be able to do with this budget. I didn't think we'd hit into the backlog. I think that's going to take a revenue increase down the road. So the fact that we're able to manipulate some internal money and make this work, I think it's really smart. I would make a recommendation, if we get at the end of this budget, and we've got extra money in reserves that we weren't anticipating, then maybe appropriately, we could go ahead and pay off some of the internal loan we're making to the wastewater. I don't think you're going to find that there, but if it does, I would love to get out of debt as a county anyways. So I think this is really good, guys, and I'm impressed, so.
Any other comments? Okay, so we have a motion, or do we have a motion?
Yes.
You made a motion. Commissioner Barfield made a motion to pay off the existing constitutional gas tax bond debt. Do we have a second?
And give them flexibility to find the best, the best approach to do that, and bring it back to us.
Okay.
Have a second?
And we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Now, do you want to make another motion to...
You know, I'll, I'll roll over on this one.
Well, you can bring it up later.
Yeah, yeah.
When he comes back with the numbers.
Yeah, so I'll hold it to them.
I'll make a motion, though, that 6 million of the funds is reserved for the use of resurfacing.
Yeah, and the best case, or the best case finance... It includes just what Commissioner Tobias said, because, you know, John and I looked at, what if the additional general fund supplement is 501, you know, half a million? What does that do to the scenario? So we'll continue to run the scenario to try to get us to that. Really, what you're, what you're shooting for is the 61 prior to the 2000, prior to the 2022. So I think that's going to be the effect of either front-loading it or not. You know, you get 61 quicker than the 2022.
Now, if I make that a motion, I'm not taking away from what Commissioner Barfield's trying to do. We're just making sure that that money is reserved towards roads, but we haven't distributed it.
Yeah, and his caveat just covers all three points. That's all. Just make that modification.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to make available the current $6 million funds to be used for resurfacing, using it over a four-year period. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. And I need a motion for number three.
I make a motion that staff would be able to acquire another 300... I make a motion that staff would be able to acquire another 391,000 from the general fund to be used towards this project.
Did you hear that? Okay, we have a motion to allocate an additional $391,000 from the general fund for resurfacing by Commissioner Pritchett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Zanardi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Pass is 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, we'll look at the best-case scenario, and that may, that may eventually end up being some sort of variation on all three of those points up there. Mr. Chairman, we'll move on to general government?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, I'll be presenting the General Government Department Budget to you. And as Stockton mentioned, this is the first department presentation in a series of five workshops over the next several months. And so, and so the presentation outline for each of those department presentations will follow the same general format. We'll be discussing the mission statement of the department and the programs and services that that department provides, along with the funding sources and what those dollars are used for. And then also, for the general government budget presentation discussion, I'm going to spend some time talking about the budget development timeline to give you an idea of what will happen over the next several months. And then, we're also going to request board direction on a number of items to ensure that, as we're developing the budget, that it's based on the priorities and guidelines set forth by the board. And so this is the mission statement for general government, and I'm going to read this to you. General government services is comprised of three major functions which do not fit within the county's formal organization and are therefore administered by the budget office. And these three functions are combined for presentation purposes only and are represented as general government operations, general government long-term debt, and mandated programs. And so this next slide shows you the organizational chart for general government. And each department in the budget book, you'll see this, a similar organizational chart, which will show the department and then the programs that fall under the department. And their budgets are also presented by program in the budget document for you. Oops, went too far. There we go. This slide may look familiar to you from the March 9th presentation where we discussed the fiscal year 1617 budget. These are the operating revenues associated with general government. As you can see, the largest portion of your general government operating dollars come from your ad valorem taxes that are received from the general countywide millage rate. And so those make up about 68% of the operating revenue for general government. You also have your four major revenue sources, which are the local half-cent sales tax, state shared revenue, FPL franchise fee, and the communication services tax. So combined, those major revenue sources are about 27% of the operating revenue. The charges for services represent revenue received from other departments through the cost allocation plan for administrative services. And then other sources are primarily local business taxes, some interest revenue, and some permits and fees. This chart displays the revenue categories as they're presented in the budget document. And so I wanted to show it to you and kind of describe how it's presented in the budget book. You'll see in that first column, general government operations, that $195 million in operating revenue, that corresponds with the dollars on the previous slide. Underneath that, you have your non-operating revenues, which are balance forwards and transfers. And you'll notice, general government is a little bit different from the other departments in, that you can see a negative dollar amount in the transfers. And the reason for that is that the general government receives those operating dollars that are the general fund dollars. Those are then transferred out to other agencies and departments. When they're transferred to other agencies and departments that are in the general fund group, they are called intra-fund transfers. So they show up as a negative revenue instead of as an expense. So that's why you see that credit amount there in the general government operating revenue. So again, those are called intra-fund transfers, and it's just a transfer of financial resources between funds that are in the same fund group. So those are credits to revenue, not expenses. And I'll show you a reconciliation on the next slide. So that's your first column in the general government operations, and then you have your general government long-term debt. There's no operating revenue associated with this program. It's primarily a transfer from general revenue. And then there's also some transfers that come into general government long-term debt because as loans have been consolidated over time for lower interest rates, there's, they've been consolidated, and so we have some transfers coming in from emergency management, Parks and Recreation, the Valkyrie Airport, and court facilities and libraries. So as we talk about the general fund, general government debt, I'm gonna focus on the portion that is the general fund portion of that debt. Under general government mandates, with the exception of about $150,000 in fees that come in to support legal aid, that is a $20.8 million transfer from the general fund to support mandates. So when you look at the entire department budget for general government, it's 93, just over $93 million. And I'm gonna move along to the next slide and kind of show you, again, how those intra-fund transfers out impact that. So you have your operating revenue, you have your balance forward, which, the balance forward represents primarily the general government reserves, as well as any unspent dollars from the prior fiscal year. Your transfers in, these represent transfers from other departments. These are primarily excess fees that are received from the charter offices, and that's primarily the tax collector. And then also, there are some payment in lieu of taxes from solid waste and utilities that account for those transfers in. So your general government revenue is $220.4 million. And then those intra-fund transfers, which are credits to revenues that are going out, are that $127.4 million, and that gives you that $93.04 million in general government So I'm going to walk you through the expenses associated with general government. And the next several slides, we're going to go into detail, not only on the general government mandates, but the long-term debt and the general government operations as well. So I just wanted to categorize these for you here so you could see the breakdown. The transfers to charter officers, court operations, and then the board, board departments, public safety, those departments will all be coming before you at a later workshop date, and so they'll be able to present their line item budgets, their budget categories, expenses and revenues to you. So I'm going to focus on these three slices here of the pie that are in the upper left-hand corner, which are, again, the general government operations, general government mandates, and then the general government long-term debt. And so we'll start off with the general government mandates. I've listed out all of the general government mandates for you here. On March 9th, when we talked about mandates, we also discussed the medical examiner, and we discussed the courts. The medical examiner falls under housing and human services, and they'll be presenting to you later on today. So, so we're gonna leave that out of this slide, and it'll be discussed later on. So, starting off with Medicaid, this is the county's required contribution of the state's portion of matching funds required for the Medicaid program. And this amount is calculated and determined by the Social Services Estimating Conference, and it's deducted directly from our local half-cent sales tax revenue. So it's deducted right out of the revenue we receive. We actually don't even see these dollars. The next two items, the property appraiser and tax collector fee for services. The county is required to pay commission payments to the property appraiser and the tax collector, not only for services they provide to the county, but to the school boards and cities for the property appraiser, and on behalf of the school board for the tax collector. So we break these out separately into the mandates, so we can account for them there. The Baker Act, this is a state mandate for Baker Act mental health services for indigent Brevard County residents, and we contract with Circles of Care to provide this service. The pre-trial detention of juveniles is a state mandate for shared county and state responsibility for juvenile detention, and the state determines the amount that the county is responsible for. And those payments are made to the Department of Juvenile Justice. The, the legal aid mandate, these are providing legal services to the poor and disadvantaged residents of the county. And again, I mentioned earlier that there are some fees for services that also come in to support this program. So this is the general fund portion of that. The East Coast, or the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council, this fee is calculated by the council using a per capita population-based dues assessment. We actually received that assessment for the upcoming fiscal year already, and we know that that is going to increase by approximately $25,000. So that is one mandate that, that we know will be increasing next year. And then, I won't read off the rest of them to you, but we did provide the Florida statute and the budget amounts for child protection, indigent burials, the Value Adjustment Board, and Healthcare Act, and inmate medical bill mandates. So those equal $20.9 million of your general government budget. Moving along to the general government long-term debt, the interest rates for these debts range between 1.23% and 3.52%. I'll spend a little time explaining the, each of the loans. The pooled commercial paper loan is a variety of different commercial paper draws for 800 megahertz, mosquito helicopters, the sheriff's CAD system, and the Valkyrie hangars, just to name a few. And again, we do get some revenue and transfers from those departments to help support that. The sales tax revenue and improvement bonds, those are for construction and improvements to the jail. The non-ad valorem revenue note is the refunding of outstanding commercial paper. There's an internal loan that is here paid out of general government, and that was a loan from solid waste to fund the payment of the golf course debt. The, the subordinated sales tax refunding bonds were for the South Mainland Service Center and additional court facilities in Viera. The non-ad valorem revenue note is for the energy performance contract. And so this, as you can see, there's a credit underneath it. These are transfers from other departments for the savings, the utility savings that resulted from, from that contract. And then the final debt listed here is for the Elections Warehouse.
On the debt portion for the general government, I think the, the golf course debt drops off, Larry, is that 2021?
2019.
2019.
Right, it's a three.
And so, again, you have some good things that are gonna be happening within the next four to five years, or three to four fiscal years, and that, that's over a million dollars per year. And golf course debt, that's gonna drop off, the final one is in 2019. So again, some good things are on the horizon with regards to general government expenditures.
And moving along to general government operations, we have the TIF payments, and so those are for the North Brevard Economic Development Zone, and then the community redevelopment agencies. And we have a workshop scheduled for Thursday, so we'll discuss the community redevelopment agencies in greater detail. And as Stockton mentioned earlier, until we get the property appraiser values, we won't know what the impact is on those community redevelopment agencies as well, because as the property values grow in those areas, the required payment based on all of these factors would increase as well, potentially. There are several grants that are funded out of general government. The Economic Development Commission, this is a grant agreement between the board and the EDC for promoting economic development. There are two economic incentives that are budgeted in the current year. The first one is Project Blue. This is a $500,000 incentive, and it's due in four stages. We paid the first stage of the $500,000 last fiscal year, so this is stage two, and it requires a certain amount of capital investments and job creation. Project Magellan, this is phase two of a two-phase project, so this will be the last year that, assuming they meet the terms of the agreement, that we pay that, that'll be the end of that incentive. And then we also, the general government funds $100,000 for the Brevard Cultural Alliance. $50,000 of that goes to fund the Cultural Arts Agreement, which is the management of the program, and then the additional $50,000 is passed through grants that are awarded to qualified county community cultural grants program grant recipients. The publications and memberships, you can see, we have several memberships, and these are important. They, they keep the county informed and up to date on issues facing counties throughout the state, as well as regional priorities and strategies for building sustainable communities. Went too far. I'm not gonna read the contracted services to you. I will let you know that there are several items on here that, as Stockton mentioned earlier, are non-recurring, and those include the oyster gardening and the email migration. So these are non-recurring expenditures, so those funds will be freed up next year and will help support the additional $391,000 going to Public Works for the road resurfacing. The compensation and benefits that are funded out of general government include annual and sick leave payouts, and those are discussed in Merit System Policy 9. General government also funds unemployment compensation, and then a portion of the salaries and benefits associated with the clerk to the special magistrate. And then the professional services, legal services for outside counsel, the clerk of court fees, what those are, are filing fees for county ordinance citations. We have a consultant that prepares our cost allocation plan, and then there's also some training listed in the professional services. And then finally, these are all of the other general government expenses. The first two items listed are indirect costs that are formulated through the cost allocation plan. The TRDA reimbursement, that is something that is also a non-recurring expense this year. And then we have some other miscellaneous items, like the TRIM bill expenses, solid waste assessments at county buildings, advertising, historic commission, so you can see all And so, as we move through the budget development process, again, this is actually the second budget workshop, but it's the first of five workshops scheduled in April and May where you'll hear from all of the departments and the charter offices and the courts. And during this time, we'll be asking the board for direction on a number of topics. We'll also be working on revenue and expenditure. We'll also be working on revenue and expenditure forecasting, paying attention to the Florida Legislative Session, and to determine if there's any impacts to the county there. On May 1st, we'll receive the supervisor of election and the clerk budgets, so we'll have an idea what their requests are. And then on June 1st, we receive an estimate of the total assessed value of property for the current year, and we'll use that to start planning and calculating the preliminary And then, also in June, the sheriff and property appraiser submit their budgets, and then the county manager meets with the departments and agencies to talk about their budget On July 1st, we receive the certified property values from the property appraiser, and this really starts the clock ticking on the truth and millage requirements. We have 35 days after we receive those certified property values to certify the applicable forms and return them to the property appraiser. And so, we'll present to you in July a proposed budget, and on July 25th, the board will set those tentative ad valorem millages, and then we're required to get that information back to the property appraiser, and they send out the TRIM notices within 55 days of the certification of value. And again, those TRIM notices, they notify the constituents with the tentative millage rates, and it also serves as an announcement for the first public hearing in September. So August 1st is when we receive the tax collector's budget. Again, the property appraiser will mail out those TRIM notices by August 25th, and if there's any changes to the operating or CIP budgets after the board has received that tentative budget, then we'll work on those during the month of August. And then September, we have our two public hearings. The first public hearing is required within 65 to 80 days of the certification, which again is that July 1st date. And at this hearing, the board adopts a tentative millage and budget. Within 15 days after the tentative budget hearing, we advertise intent to adopt a final millage, which is done at the second public hearing. And at that public hearing, there's a reading of the rolled-back rates, the percentage increase for all of the 25 taxing districts. So...
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, so the way we've built these presentations is that, you know, if you look at your schedule, you don't really have a wrap-up workshop. And so, as the agencies are coming before you, we're giving you the sort of broad funding categories, broad programs and services funding categories. And so, unless you all say to Frank that you are reducing a level of service or a program, then he's going to go under the assumption that it is a status quo programs and services, service-level budget. And so, you've accepted the road proposal. There may be some ability to do another cost of living adjustment, so we would ask that you provide him direction to at least, as he's balancing out his budget proposal, to at least look towards possibly including a cost of living adjustment. No promise that he can get there, but at least give him direction to actually make that one of the priorities. And then again, unless you all say to Frank and the budget office that you are decreasing funding associated with current service levels or current program levels, then he's going to, again, go under the assumption that it is a status quo in terms of service levels. So those three, those two items remain for board direction or board discussion.
Fellow commissioners, let's talk about funding a cost of living adjustment. Thoughts? Comments?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, Pritchett.
I believe we're not going to need at this time to vote any kind of critical need adjustment over the cap. So I think these three items here moving forward, I think it's very appropriate direction to move towards. I believe the staff is going to need some pay increases. I think it's past overtime. So if you're able to do that, I fully support that. I'm very happy with the ability to stop the bleeding the roads. I think that's a milestone for where we have been in the past. I'm hoping next year we tackle the backlog, and we're going to have to get creative with new revenues because the budget's tight. Hopefully with all the new growth coming into the area, we'll have more revenues coming in, and hopefully we'll be doing something with that charter cap down the road. The current service levels, I haven't, I don't know that we need to change any of those. I'd like to maintain them. There might be some we need to increase, but I don't think the fundings there just yet for them. But if we get additional funding, I think we should come back and maybe talk about increasing service levels. We're in a time of growth, so I think these are very responsible, appropriate items to move in a direction forward with the budget, and I fully support this.
Any other comments?
I have a question with Jill, and you probably, you may not have the answer now, but I noticed there's a few things that are one-time that we won't have this year. Can you maybe get to us at some later time, all of that, all the ones that were one-time for this current budget that won't show up on the next budget?
For general government?
Yeah, to give us an idea of funding.
And those are listed, it's the TRDA reimbursement, and then the oyster gardening and the email migration are the three that are listed in this presentation.
Okay. I can look it up then.
Yeah, I can send you a summary.
I got it right there.
Commissioner Thibodeau.
Thank you. On the second one, the attempt to fund a cost of living, when you, do you have any idea what that would be across the board? And if you do go in that direction, I would ask that you would stratify that so we could prioritize the folks that are on the lower end of the spectrum. I think it was disproportionate amount of that would go to folks that are higher up there, so I would like to see...
And we've done that before, that approach, so we could look at it that way, if that's what the board would like.
Or at least just to look at it, to come up with a potential idea. So, and then, Mr. Chair, some, are you looking for individual questions on the maintenance, the increase or the decrease?
Whatever thoughts you have, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. Many of these are non-recurring, and it's very important to identify because I imagine certain things will pop up next year that we don't have the ability to forecast. Until today, I didn't know that being part of that one organization would cost the county an extra, you know, $25,000 that was mandated. But I want to thank your staff and that of all the departments that spent a great deal of time with not only my office and myself to go through this budget, so we could make recommendations for potential decreases in the level of service, so we don't have to increase the taxes on our citizens. So I'd like to start with the mandate, since that's what you started with, and thank you for delineating that. On the indigent burials, currently we provide services of cremation as well as burial, and burial is an extra $150. So the question was out there, and I understand if, you know, it's taken a while to get back, and if you don't have it offhand, that would be great. I would just like to know how much we potentially could save if we went to all cremation instead of offering burial, or we're under any mandate to provide the higher service for those indigents.
For indigent burials, you're right, the delta between burials and cremations is about $150. We currently pay $450 for a cremation, $600 for burial. We brought a policy to the board last year to basically move to as many cremations as possible. So right now, we're under a policy that says that unless there's a statutory requirement to bury, we do everything as a cremation. I will tell you that we traditionally budget $80,000 a year. It is dependent on the number of indigents who come in seeking the service, and we have had many years where we've gone above the $80,000, sometimes up to $120,000. So again, it is dependent upon that. One of the issues that we would run into that I could speak to is if we don't budget enough dollars, the process to go through a BCR, you don't want to leave a body sitting at a funeral home for the time period that that would potentially take to move through our process.
Thank you for that. Thank you. I didn't understand the statutory obligation to bury certain individuals as opposed to, you know, cremate, so that's enlightening. Moving on to the other general fund obligations, I appreciate you listing all that out. I did not find anything that we could do with the debt, and, you know, clearly you found some ways to work around that. But my main concerns were dealing with the large general government expenditures, which according to me accounted for more than $6.7 million. First of all, I'd like to say I don't believe there's any waste involved in this. I think that this ultimately comes down to a prioritization of funds. So no judgments to anyone that has voted for this in the past, but the chairman of this board put a mandate on us and said, "Find us resources that we potentially can put into roads and that can be better spent with our infrastructure." So what my staff, as well as the help from your office, did was make some suggestions where we could reprioritize some of those funds into infrastructure, potentially doing away with, you know, dealing with that debt service, or even increasing that $391,000. So my question's to be, what return investment do we get, certainly that is higher than infrastructure, on, and looking at some of these membership, the foundation for building, my regional membership costs taxpayers $25,000. And, you know, I have the, I have, you know, their generic, what we do, we support the work of Central Florida Legislative Delegation. I was a member of that Central Florida delegation for eight years and never once heard from this organization. So, you know, that's my first, that, you know, that would be my first suggestion. While I understand the Florida Association of Counties is very important dealing with mandates that are passed down a great deal of our budget, my question would be the National Association of County Membership, they cost taxpayers almost $11,000. And finally, my favorite was the International City, and that's wonderful, and I, but my understanding is we are a county, and I don't know about the $3,500 that taxpayers fund for that. Moving down the list, we employ a state lobbyist who does quite a bit of work with my office dealing with mandates, but I have not heard from, never, and do not know, our federal lobbyist, in which it looks as though that is a contract of $48,000. So I'd like to know what return, that policy return that we get for that $48,000. While LEED Brevard is a wonderful program that cultivates, you know, young professionals, I don't know that in these austere times that that's the best budgetary use of funds that could go to infrastructure. Going down to the Historical Commission, I know that this is a cost distribution with libraries, and I know you were going to look into that for me. I hope you were able to find out how that could be split more equitable with the library fees and come out of general fund. Employee Innovation Program, a $7,500 expense, is a policy directive that's eight or 10 years old, was due for changing in 2015, and has not been touched. So either that policy needs to be reevaluated, or that $7,500 probably needs to go back into the general fund. While these programs are, a big fan of our current county manager, the Lean Six Sigma workshops, as I think we're going to see during the county commission meeting today, certainly I'd like to see, you know, the benefit as opposed to the deteriorating roads, as well as the other training, the ELI, the Seven Habits, and the LEED cast that costs taxpayers $15,000. Moving on to the EDC, understanding that this is merely a grant, and I was not a part of the commission that voted for that grant, but there is very little transparency provided. I asked for a whole bunch of information from the EDC, salaries, travel, and they did not need to provide me with that information because the grant that the Brevard County taxpayers of $1.4 million doesn't require. So my suggestion would be to decrease EDC funding by a third. I would like to do away with it altogether or potentially move it in-house, but certainly as we move forward to add some transparency to our taxpayers, so they know where their hard-earned funds are going. And finally, the Brevard Cultural Alliance for $100,000. Again, a very worthy and admirable program. But when we're looking at roads that are deteriorating faster than we're able to keep up, I don't know if that amounts to a total of, I don't know if it amounts to a need as opposed to a want. So just these, you know, basic things account for a little over $700,000, and be glad to provide a list, but would like to look at these a little more critically in these austere times, and at least justify how they provide more services and more benefit to our taxpayers than what repaving or reconstructing roads would be.
Anyone else? Okay, we have some speaker cards. Vinnie Toronto.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, and county staff. I just wanted to, thank you for giving me a brief moment to talk about LEED Brevard. John, since you talked about the program, I just wanted to give you my personal perspective on the return on investment that the county and the taxpayers get for that money. I do, and I do understand the position that the commissioners and all Brevardians are in regarding our roads and other resources. My first, I currently serve on the LEED board, but my first experience was 24 years ago as a high school junior. Here, I went to a summer youth leadership program, and even as a 16-year-old, it was tremendous and relatable. It was an overview of our county that inspired me to want to give more, but not only did it inspire me, but it showed me how and where and pathways to get there. Nine years ago, I returned back to Brevard after my college and early career experiences, and I had the energy and desire to be a positive impact for our community, but wasn't sure where to start until I reconnected with LEED. I participated in their flagship Leadership Brevard program, and since then, I've worked on community issues in our county like homelessness, the foster care system, youth grief counseling, nonprofit grant giving, community education scholarships, governmental sustainability, and lately, the Indian River Lagoon, as I currently serve on the Half-Sent Sales Tax Oversight Committee, which puts me at the other end of the podium, which is much more comfortable where you guys are sitting. But the county's tax dollars, the county's tax dollars through LEED has led me and countless others to be equipped to better work together in a nonpartisan manner to strengthen our community. Simplified, let's say the county gave me a dollar to go through the leadership of our programs. Well, every organization I've worked with in the county, I then gave them $1.25. Well, every organization I've worked with in the county, I then gave them $1.25. What I did is I took the dollar the county gave me, and because I was equipped and learned to be a better leader, I was able to increase that amount of money that I could then give back to many other organizations in the community. It's like a slot machine. I was like a winning slot machine, pull the handle and I give you some money. So that dollar multiplied. The monetary increase comes from me being a better leader and from others. This isn't just my story. It's not just a young professional story. It's everybody's story, a lot of other stories I've heard around the county. I'm also involved with other leadership programs around the state like Leadership Florida and Connect Florida. And one of the things that LEED-Brevard does different is that we don't have an applicant selection process. So in other words, this allows anybody in the county to come in and partake because we believe anybody in the county can be a leader or can inspire somebody to lead. Thank you for your time. If you haven't been to a LEED-Brevard event, I would highly encourage you to, so you could come and inspire others or be inspired yourself. Thank you.
Josh Field.
Thanks, Vinnie, and thank you all for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I am Josh Field. I'm a 14-year resident of District Four. My day job is heading up corporate branding and marketing strategy for Parish Medical Center, but I'm here today representing LEED-Brevard as the chairman of its board of directors. So for any of you that may be unfamiliar with LEED-Brevard, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community leadership organization that's been educating, developing, connecting, and convening local leaders to address community and countywide issues and opportunities since the early 1980s. Over 1,200 community leaders representing technology, education, healthcare, nonprofits, military, hospitality, government, and every other sector that contribute to making Brevard just a great place to live and work, excuse me, are graduates of our flagship Leadership Brevard program. And throughout the year, hundreds more attend our events such as our annual Stakeholder Summit, our Board Governments Training Workshops, and our 440 Leadership Awards. Our mission is working together to strengthen our community by inspiring people to lead. And as a private sector citizen, I respect and I empathize with the responsibility of this Board of Commissioners to best manage the needs of the county with the resources available and the spending parameters of the budget. And I'm grateful that I don't have to make the decisions or look into the eyes of the constituents as you contemplate cutting funding for community-based organizations that support seniors and people with disabilities and victims of domestic abuse and others who just need a helping hand. A wise man once said, "Give a man a fish and you feed him for a day; teach a man to fish and you feed him for a lifetime." Well, it takes leaders to teach men to fish, and for over 32 years, LEED-Brevard has been preparing and inspiring ordinary people just like you and me to do that, to step up and take action, whether as an elected official, as a board member of a nonprofit, a youth sports coach, or a volunteer at a local school, church, or charity. The funds that the county has allocated to LEED-Brevard have helped us to facilitate strategic initiatives that address key issues facing our community, going back to 2002, when we were first tasked by the county with stewarding the Brevard Tomorrow Preferred Future Initiative. Since then, we've also provided a platform for our county manager to share the annual State of the County with top business and civic leaders. And our Leadership Brevard classes, through their Leadership Action Projects, have volunteered over 2,500 hours and raised close to $1.8 million for local organizations, including some of those that are here this afternoon who directly benefited from the efforts of those Leadership Brevard teams and are now in jeopardy of losing a portion of their funding. So I ask, as you review the Contracted Services allocation of the Brevard County Government Operations Budget for the next year, please continue to support LEED-Brevard so that we may continue to inspire people to lead and address the challenges that face our county today and in the future. Thank you.
Hi, Pamela Sal-Viera. Jill answered my primary question, but I'm listening to the discussion. Apparently, the Lean Six Sigma is going to be a recurring expense since it wasn't one of the nonrecurring. And then this follow-up question is, do, will all employees receive training for this or just selected employees? So if you don't know that.
The, the training that's provided is a week-long training for the leaders of teams. Those are the ones who go through the training. And then they form the teams and share the results from the training and all the tools that are available as they process whatever project they're working on.
Okay. I think there might be two levels of training. I think there, from what I've seen.
Well, actually, there's, there's, there's three or four levels. There's a yellow belt training, which is an initial training for people, it's one day.
Right.
There's what they call a green belt training, which is for the team leaders.
Right.
Which is a week-long training. And then those who become more advanced, there's a three-week training, and that's their, the third level.
So will all employees get the yellow belt training then?
We, no, we haven't done yellow belt training for all employees. We did it for members of the leadership team, including all the directors, managers, and then interested supervisors went through that training.
Okay. So all employees won't be getting it then?
No.
You'll count on the employees already trained, training the other employees?
Exactly. Those that get involved in teams. Not every employee will be involved in teams. We have about 20-plus teams functioning right now, and those teams have anywhere between six and maybe eight or nine members on them.
Okay. Okay. And so is, do you want to get back to me on whether it's going to be recurring or nonrecurring?
Well, the plan is for it to be recurring, to have additional teams and additional individuals trained in that green belt training.
Okay. All right. The other issue, listening to some folks here, when I think of taxpayers, I think of people who are working two jobs or three jobs. I think of taxpayers who are senior citizens who didn't expect to have to go back and flip burgers. I don't see tax dollars going through any kind of alchemy to increase the value of it. Tax dollars or a reallocation of, of an asset to an individual, it is not an investment in government. Thank you.
Dave Pasley.
Hi, Dave Pasley, Melbourne Beach Commissioners, and thank you for having the opportunity to talk with you a little bit. This is my second year working on the Budget Review Committee. First year, we basically tried to figure out what in the world you guys were doing with the budget. Second year, we're still trying to figure that out, but it's, it's, it's good. I mean, it's not, I don't mean this in a negative sense in any way. Most of us on the committee come from a different background. We've come from business, and there are some things that we do in business that are different than government does. Number one is how anyone puts together a budget without having some assumptions of what's going to happen to the revenue picture for the coming year is beyond me. I still scratch my head and say, "I do not understand how I don't have a picture here that says, 'Let's see, we have so many building permits, there are going to be houses built, there's going to be warehouses. How much revenue do I have coming in?'" Don't know. That's, that's always the big unknown. So that's the first thing that really disturbs me. The second is there's not a set of priorities. In the business world, the director, the vice president, sends a front view and says, "Okay, here's our priorities. We are going to spend $65 million on this, we're going to do that," the other thing. They don't seem to have that. I mean, roads should be a priority, but looking at our past spending, it certainly hasn't been, and money has been taken from roads to pay for other things. Well, I think it's time to take money from those other things and start paying for some roads. Very simple process. The commissioners have been asked to go off and nitpick the budget to try to find a few dollars, and God bless you. I mean, it's, but one of the things that we really need to take a look at is what the actuals have been, actual spenders have been, and you can't do it for 2017, obviously, because you're still spending. But 2016, we ought to be able to go back, 2015, take a look at that and see if, if going forward, we can, we can find a few dollars there. I think there's, there's enough there to, to get us over this hurdle of, of the, of creating or getting through the backlog of, of road construction that we need. I'm, I'm sure that this question has been asked, but let me state it. The commission has been asked to go nitpick the budget. Have the, have the same challenge been given to the department heads? Have the same department, the same challenge been saying, "Look, guys, let's, let's look at it from a couple of different directions. Let's say that your budget's cut by 10%. What's it going to do to your services? Let's say that I increase your budget by 10%. What's it going to do to services?" This is common practice in the business world. Also, we'd like to see-
Dave, 30 seconds.
-variance reports. Anytime we're going to sit down and talk about a budget, actuals versus what was budgeted by the year, we need to take a look at the variances and understand those. And I realize this is another, another step in the process and a little more work, but something that I think we need to take a look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so, does the board have any more comment on funding a cost-of-living adjustment? Commissioners, noddy.
I would just suggest that, you know, it's never easy to cut, you know, everybody's got a compelling case to why we should keep something as opposed to remove it. But if we're going to, if we're going to do a cost-of-living adjustment, which I'm, you know, I would be supportive of, we have to remove it elsewhere. You know, I, I think that that's the responsible thing to do, and I think, you know, I think that we need to make sure that we, that we make that a priority as well, because we're losing good employees to other municipalities and to private business and otherwise, and you don't, I mean, I, I see it, you know, I'm very close to the city of Palm Bay, and I see how we, we steal sometimes county employees because we don't pay them enough here. So I'm not suggesting that we, we go gung-ho, but I think that many have seen no raises for a very long time, and I think we need to at least take care of, especially the ones that are lagging behind.
So is that a motion?
Yes, that'll be a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. Comments on current service funding levels? This would require us to go program by program. Comments? Motions?
We have to go through each program?
Well, not right now.
Okay. I say we got to be in another hour.
Besides, we have another meeting.
We do. We do. Well, I, I-
This is giving, this is giving direction.
Yes, sir. I stated in the beginning, I'd like to maintain current service levels, and I don't know what the revenues are going to be yet. I, like Mr. David just said a minute ago, I'm waiting to see what they're going to come back as, and there's-
Commissioner, can I, can I address that point? We look at revenues all the time, and we look at revenues when the state looks at revenues, when the state gives us revenue projections. We do a trend analysis on revenues. We get the largest revenue projection June 1st, which is from the property appraiser. And I've had a conversation with the property appraiser. I'm not sure that she wanted me to share that with the general public, but we, we look at revenues all the time. We look at them over and over again, and so they'll look at them prior to June 1st, they'll look at them after June 1st, they'll get the certified on July 1st. The state will present their final revenue projections, and so they'll look at revenue projections all the way up until your final budget hearing. So we do look at revenues. On the general government expenditure side, there's one item on Commissioner, on the Commissioner's list that I can offer up, and it's the, that's not the International City Management Association, it's actually the International City County Management Association. So that was an association fee that was in the county manager's contract that I assumed when I took over the contract for Howard. And so that's $3,500. I don't know what your, your, your next crop of candidates are going to want in terms of paid membership associations, but that's an easy one for us to take out of the budget is the $3,500 associated with the International City County Management Association.
Okay. I, I would imagine right now, too, you've got a little bit of a handle where you are moving forward. So if you brought these, I'm guessing you feel like there's an ability to meet these three directives with the budget?
Yeah, I think, I think there is, but you, you, you know, I mean, if, if there's general, if there's a consensus by the board that you're going to try to maintain current service levels, you're going to look at those as each department comes up. And so I'm assuming, just as we've gotten a list today, and I don't know what you're going to do with the list, that you'll do that with each of the departments that'll come up. So, so if, if it's just a general consensus of the board that where you can, or where they can, they're going to maintain current service levels unless you say differently, then that's the direction that we'll take.
I believe if there's, there's funding that's appropriate, unless there's something that we all agree that isn't bringing anything to the table as far as county services, but my request would be for you to move forward and keep in current service level, because I believe we're able to meet all these objectives without any budget cuts at this time. So that would, that would be my, my request, sirs.
Anyone else? Yes. Commissioner Tobias. My request would be similar. I think that we need to maintain, I just think we need to reprioritize. I think I gave a list of almost a million dollars that can be reprioritized into infrastructure, because if we continue with the current plan, we don't turn the curve for five or six years. I'd like to do that a heck of a lot sooner. So I'd like to sit up here and say that I'm going to be gung-ho for tax cuts, but unfortunately, that's not a reality when it comes to the need for infrastructure. What the need is with the maintenance of service is to provide the core services. So while, you know, the slot machine of LEED-Brevard may be great, and I've never wanted a slot machine, I keep on losing it at, at that, but I, I think that we are much better apt with all of us going into this budget, spending countless hours going, going through this line item by line item and saying, "Maybe we can provide the same services, but maybe those services would have a greater impact instead of the 40 or 50 people that may be in LEED-Brevard or the folks that get the grants for the Brevard Culture Alliance. Maybe they could be better spent on paving roads of which the bulk of Brevard County uses on a daily basis." So I will continue with your staff's help as well as the staff of each and every department to go through this on a line item basis, and while not cut, shift those resources from one department into the charge that, quite frankly, the chairman of this board gave us, to find money that we can put forward to roads. So I, I think that we can do that without having to go ask our taxpayers to, to, to pay more money. So I, I would, I would like to maintain as well and just reprioritize, but I think it's very difficult to generalize on each and every department. I think we have to do our due diligence as each presenter comes up to go through this and make specific suggestions so we can discuss this as a group and come to some consensus as any one of these line items is just as important, more important, or not as important as the need to repave and resurface our roads that, that we hear are in dire need, and it will cost us more and more the, the further we don't prioritize that spending. and it will cost us more and more the, the further we don't prioritize that spending.
Anyone else? Commissioner Pritchett.
I, I agree with that, with you, Mr. Tobias. The list you went through, other than the subscriptions, because I'm not sure I know where they go, but all those other ones, I kind of like. Lean Six Sigma, I know. So I think we're going to have to.
I like them, too. I'm sorry if I didn't mean it negatively.
I, no, no, you're allowed to have opinions, sir. All right, that's good. Like Lean Six Sigma, I've seen such good work in, in where I've came from. So I, I, I think you're right. I think we're going to have to bring these up, maybe make a consensus vote of what we think is priority as, as a commission and go forward on them, and that might help staff out. But I think we're agreeing then that the current level of funding is appropriate, and then we're going to make decisions moving forward, I guess, with that. But I'm, I'm actually happy that we got roads to the point where they're not going in the hole anymore, and then we figure out new resources to, to fix the backlog. And I got very excited when you start talking about some of these bonds about to be paid off next year, too, because that opens up a whole new amount of money there. My favorite thing to do if, if we could move forward is getting rid of all the debt. That's, that's a perfect world to me, and I don't know if we'll, we'll get there, because we bond out as a government. But I would love to get rid of debt moving forward. I don't know how we're going to do it, but it would be quite exciting not to have to make bond payments, but we'll see where we get with that.
Commissioner, you said next year, the parks is two fiscal years from now.
I'm sorry, I jumped ahead one year after doing this one. The next year's, but.
Anyone else weigh in on this?
Are we going to go through those items individually? I mean, does the rest of the commission?
We will in the future. Yeah, we will in the future. We're not going to do it tonight.
Okay.
We're just giving direction. I would, I would like to just say, reaffirming what Commissioner Tobias has said, that I have charged the other commissioners with looking at this budget very, very diligently. I like these programs, too. It's very difficult. I know each one of you knocked on doors, just like I did, and people said to you, I don't want higher taxes, but I don't want you to cut anything I like. You can cut everything else. So if I like parks and I don't like libraries, then guess who's on my list? Libraries. That's what that person would say. But then the next door you knock on, they'll say, I like libraries. You can cut the parks. So you can see the dilemma, and I think everybody here understands the dilemma that we're in. It's a very tough position to be in. We have an awful lot of good programs in this county, but, and everybody hates the but, but we do have a critical need in our roads, and we're going to pay the piper at one point or another so we can dance the fine line and not cut anything, and maybe, maybe I'll even be out of office by the time the stuff hits the fan, but it's going to hit the fan. So the sooner this board accepts that responsibility, the better off everybody out here is going to be.
Well, I, I think by resurfacing the roads and stopping the bleed, we've just saved 38. something million, which I think's incredible. I think to get that other backlog that we got, we're, we're not going to be able to pin any nickel. We're going to have to come up with another, another resource, and I know it's not the popular thing, but there's going to have to be some kind of tax increase, whether it's removing the cap down the road and working with a normal budget. I, I'm amazed with this. I, I, I can't believe we have this cap in place, because we're not a normal government entity working within means of trying to, to do government services. So we, we're going to have to figure something out here, because there's just not enough revenue sources to fix that backlog. It's enormous. And I, I think that might have to be a conversation in the future. I know from listening to everybody's comments, it's not a popular one for now, but I, I think fixing the bleed right now is huge where we come to of, of stopping the backlog of, of the problem. We've, we've been able to stop the bad debt problem, and now we're going to have to get creative, and I don't think we'll be able to do it this year, because we've really combated a lot of big problems, in my opinion. But I think we're going to have to come up with some creative new revenue resources, ideas moving forward to fix that backlog, because it's really big.
You have a comment? So do you want us to have a, have a?
Yeah.
Motion to maintain current service?
Well, yes. And I, and then after you do that, let me ask about a process for talking about listings that are, that are presented by any, any particular commissioner, because, you know, again, you have, you have your listing of workshops, and unless you, you know, unless your process is, you're going to have a final workshop where you decide on all things that were, or, or brought before you by any commissioner, then, you know, staff doesn't know if going forward, we're looking at current level of service, or are we looking at my region? Because Commissioner Tobias mentioned my region, National Association of Counties, International City County Managers Association, the federal lobbyist lead, historical commission, and I think historical commission is, can be addressed 100% funding from libraries. So, so we can move that over. Employee innovation, Lean Six, executive leadership, seven habits, leader cast, EDC, and then BCA. So that was the list.
Yeah, and, and I'd be more than, I, I just got it, to be more than willing to, to share that with you. And as we move forward, Parks and Rec, I appreciate the new director. There were some bouncing back and forth, so I, I plan, I have this list for you now. I plan as we move forward to bring that, whether we discuss it in this arena, but literally I, I got this as it was, you know, handed up to me, and I'd be more than willing to, to share it.
So it's a huge ship that doesn't turn very easily. So I don't know if you, if, if individual commissioners are going to bring their items, do you want, I, I guess at, at the beginning of the next workshop, you can talk about as a board whether or not you're going to vote up or down funding for those items, and that way the process is a little off time, but it, it's a, it's a little better than putting those off until the back end of a budget.
Jill, would that work for you if we did it at the next workshop?
The, the sooner we get direction.
Right, I understand that.
Beginning of the next workshop, the items, that would be very helpful.
Did I hear a yeah, but there?
So it doesn't get lost. Frank said, yes.
Okay. So I would, I would advise, and you've already started with your list, anybody else that has any other thoughts on, on lists or, or things that could be cut, or things that are less of a priority than fixing these roads, and as Commissioner Pritchett said, considering maybe even revenue sources, I think, I think we have to talk about all these things. And as I said many months ago, it's not going to be easy. We're all going to have to face tough choices, and you're, you're going to have a lot of unhappy people sitting out there, but five, 10 years from now, they're going to like you, but they're not even going to realize they like you, because they're not, they're going to have money in their pockets that if we don't make the tough decisions, they're not going to have.
And both Rita and I have been here before, and we've had to look people, like two terms on city council is the same thing.
Yep.
I mean, many of the decisions that we made didn't please people, or pleased some and not others, so.
Sure. That's the nature of the beast.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I imagine other folks will be doing this. What my concern is, can we get a little direction from council here? I know there, I, I just want to make sure that we're fully, that we follow sunshine 100%. So my concern is, if I was to send this out on day one, you, you know, you were to take a look at it and then, you know, send your type of, you know, your suggestions out, or, or vice versa. I don't, I don't know how that.
Commissioner Knox, would you like to address that?
You're not allowed to interact with each other on specific matters coming forward with the board. So if one sends out their list of cuts that they want to make, or changes they want to see, you can't respond to that directly or indirectly, for that matter. So I think you'd be, although it's typical, you can give your position on a, on a particular matter, as, as long as you're not talking back and forth with one another, you should be okay if you send out your cuts, as long as your cuts aren't derived from somebody else's, and you're indicating that your cuts are, are.
What if, what if we just had particular items, like XYZ fund, and you had six or eight of those? You're not saying cut it 10% or add, boost it by 5%. You're just saying these are areas that I, I would like us to look at.
Scott, can I, can I, can I jump in here? Because unfortunately, the rest of the board wasn't prepared to, to address the list that Commissioner Tobias presented, but those are all general government expenditures. And so as, as the programs and services are coming up, I think that it's easier for you guys to, to talk about and make the decisions real time. And for instance, Housing and Human Services is coming up, and the CBO funding is under that organization. And so as, as those expenditures associated with the departments are coming up, I think that's the time to talk about and make the public aware as to whether or not you, you are cutting, reducing, modifying those services, because it's just one long list at the back end of the budget process that, that really doesn't help them, because it's just a very fluid process. So, so my suggestion would be, and you couldn't do it this time, and so that's why I said, load the suggestions of Commissioner Tobias at the beginning of the next workshop. But then the next workshop is court, is a, is a court operations, and so you can talk about cuts associated with court operations, central services, information technology, Ian maybe doing the medical examiner and veteran services today. So you'll have, you'll have some time during that next workshop to address the, the 10 or so, however many items were, were mentioned today.
And we could, the other commissioners could add hours to it at that point in time.
Yes, sir. But again, if, if you're adding.
Because I think we can all make a decision if, if, just like you brought up, some things that I hadn't thought of tonight, until tonight, I can make a decision on those. So if Mr. Barfield brings some things up, and Commissioner Pritchett brings some things up, and et cetera, we can make those decisions on the fly at the next workshop.
I just didn't want you to think I was holding anything back, but when, when it comes to sunshine, we have to comply by all those, you know, rules and, and regulations. I also didn't want to be the first person to send out a cut. That's limiting everyone else's ability then to send some type of response. I just wanted to, so we're all on a level, fair, playing field, and, and we do this as openly and transparently as possible, I think the.
Okay, so are we good?
Yeah, I think, I think you're going to address the associated expenditure, expenditure program expenditures, as those programs come up, with the exception of the next workshop, which will be this listing and whatever else you guys decide to, to present to them.
Okay.
An idea is, we could send them all to you, and then you can send them out without being specific to what commissioner. We worked with that before on another board. And that way you can just send out what the commissioner sent out for us to look at.
Does that work?
So I shouldn't interacting with one another.
No, we would just send it to Stockton, let him send it out.
Yeah, like send it to Stockton. That's, as long as you're not interacting with one another.
Right.
If you, if you send everything to Stockton, saying, I want to cut this, I want to cut this.
And he sends them to us.
And if she sends it out to everybody, that's okay.
Right.
You're not, you're not saying you're going to do something, you're saying, I'm interested in doing this. And then you're going to talk about it at a public meeting, so.
At which point we probably can disclose whose suggestions, you know, that was.
Doesn't really matter. What matters is what we do with them.
Super.
Mr. Barfield, you're awfully quiet.
Well, I mean, I agree. I mean, we're going to have to stick with the, I think we need to keep the, the current level of service, quality level, quality service. We have to do that. But along the way, we can also look at any things we can do better or any things we can reduce, you know, and that, that's going to take time. Now that we know what we have to be prepared for, for every meeting, we'll be fine.
I hate to pick on this with Commissioner Tobias, but the Lean Six Sigma, it saved us thousands of dollars at, at the last city I worked at, and it brought productivity way up. So that was the type of thing that started helping, saving a lot of funds. It was a big bang for the buck, so I, I think.
I've seen it in business do tremendous things.
I know. I was amazed at the turnaround.
In fact, I've been involved in a lot, so I know what it's about.
Yeah.
Well, you saw it here. Return on investment's amazing.
You saw it here, too, because.
Yeah.
In the development process, I mean, going to the 76 days, actually, we're at 50 something, I think, 59. I mean, so it's work, and you, I mean, Commissioners Nardi sat in on the developers' roundtable, and you asked those, the developers about how it works. I mean, it's, it's saving them time in the, in the review process, and so, but, you know, we'll show you that as we go along.
Okay, moving right along.
So commissioners, we, we have a 6 o'clock board meeting, and we have two departments, and I know we have some folks here that are interested in CBO. And CBO, the timing of that is, is that that, that's a process that takes several months to go through, and I think the community is interested in where you're going to go in terms of that funding. And so I say all that to say that it probably is better if Ian goes ahead of Parks and Rec, and then if you don't get to Parks and Rec, you can move them to the next workshop.
I agree.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to, to jump ahead of Parks. They weren't paying attention. We're going to go through, hopefully knowing that you have another meeting pretty quickly through fairly high level about the services programs and the budget through Housing and Human Services. And as Stockton said, one of the items that we have at the very end is to ask for board action on that CBO agenda item. All right. So you'll see, we, we're pretty close to what Jill had as the, the budget outline. We might have moved things around a little bit, but we're going to cover all the same topics. Our mission statement is not quite as long as general government's. It's a short six words, but I think it fairly encompasses what we see as the mission of the department, which is to serve the residents of Brevard County. Next slide gives you an idea of what the specific program areas are underneath Housing and Human Services, and we're going to go into each one in a little more depth as we move through. Next slide gives you an idea of the total funding for the department. So we have a budget of about 17.8 million. Of that, about 70% is restricted special revenue funds that have restrictions basically on what you can do with the dollars. 30% is available that do other things that are either general government, or, I'm sorry, general fund, and we'll talk about those in specifically. Please tell me if I'm going too fast. I want to make sure, because I know we have some speakers. I want to make sure that we have some time for them also. This is similar to the slide you saw for general government. It's the budget roll-up for the department by program and by different category. And you can see for each of the areas, community resources, when you get to that one, you'll see an asterisk. That's because that also includes some additional county mandates that did not get moved over to general government that still reside within the department. And the medical examiner's office also has asterisks, because that is also another mandate that still remains with us. You good? Thank you. All right. The next slide is another breakout of that 17.8 million. This is giving you an idea of what our general fund transfer is, and that's about 5.4 million, which is approximately 30% of the budget for the department. But of that 5.4 million, 1.9 million of that is additional unfunded mandates. That includes the medical examiner's office, Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, Guardian Ed Lightem. So you'll see, that's the area that's red, which are things that you basically have to expend. Green is basically everything else that we do. Administrative support, that's about 1.2 million. That actually, we can, I consider that leveraging for about that $10 million in grant funds, because if we did not have that administrative support, which is paying staff salaries, we could not function and could not meet the needs of those grants, the rules, the requirements, so on and so forth. So we need one to do the other. The other items are different items that we fund through previous board direction, one of them being veteran services. You see emergency support, the health department, so on and so forth. Questions? All right. Now we'll start looking at each individual program itself, and we're starting with community impact. You'll see listed under here the different services that are provided under community impact. The first is the Community Action Agency. That provides direct services to low and moderate income individuals and families within the county, and that's based upon specific eligibility criteria that the funding sources have. That's a mixture of state and some local dollars and federal dollars that funnel through the state to us. Criminal justice, that is basically services that the board has determined to maintain. We had some services that were able to be privatized, basically misdemeanor probation and pretrial release, but the enabling statute for privatization did not include circuit probation, for example. So circuit probation is something that we continue to do through the department. They also do oversight of jail to try and look at ways to control the population at the jail, different aspects of services that can be put in place. For example, they're looking at a reinvestment. For example, they're looking at a reinvestment grant at the federal level to look at reducing recidivism, which will hopefully reduce down the numbers at the jail. Under this also is school crossing guards. We provide school crossing guards to 23 elementary schools in unincorporated Brevard. That's about 55 crossing locations and about 3,000 crossings per day at those different locations during the school year. And then you see discretionary grants and programs, and those are partnerships that we have with different agencies to address community needs. And so, those are specific grant opportunities that are either at the state or federal level. I think right now, the majority of the grants are from federal. Those are things like drug court, juvenile drug court, something called safe haven supervised visitation, which is used when there's domestic violence. You have a custodial parent and a non-custodial parent. The non-custodial parent has a right to see their children, and this grant provides an actual ability to have a safe place for that visitation to take care of, so there's no danger to the custodial parent, who's typically the victim of the violence. Next slide that you're going to see is a breakdown, we tried to break out the actual funding that goes to support community impact. And so, you'll see, again, the items in red. Those are the grant funds, some miscellaneous dollars, and some balance forward that have restrictions on how they're able to be spent. Balance forward in this, there are several trust funds that we oversee, Drivers Education Trust Fund, Teen Court, and a substance abuse trust fund. You'll see the general fund transfer, charges for service, and also funded forfeitures, which are also not able to be used for other purposes. Next area we'll talk about is housing. And we do, as you can see, a couple of different items to try and facilitate the creation of affordable housing. So, we have RFPs that we put out occasionally. We actually have one out right now that developers can reply to, and they can either build new, which is, they create absolutely new units of affordable housing, or they can use the funding to acquire existing units and convert them to affordable housing. We have a first-time homebuyer program, which, as you can imagine, is exactly what it says. It's to help families get into their first home. And then we also have programs for rehab, repair, and replacement for homeowners, existing homeowners. Those programs have their own rules and regulations, and they also have ongoing monitoring that's associated with them, and also lean requirements that we put in place to protect the investment in those different activities. We have what are called CHODOs, Community Housing Development Organizations. That's actually a designation that we utilize, and it's based on a HUD criteria that we certify an agency, a developer, as a CHODO. There's a specific set of checklists that we look at. We look at their financials, their board, those type of things, experience in housing. The benefit for them is if they're identified as a CHODO, our HUD dollars, we have a set aside that we can use that's specific, and they're the only ones who can apply for that set aside. And that's not open to all developers. And then we have our weatherization program, which is a grant program that we go in and we look at, we prioritize for those who have high-energy bills, who are elderly, disabled, or children under 12. And we go in and address specific issues in their home to try and reduce their electric Next slide shows you the breakout of our housing revenue, and as you can see, just about all of it's red. It's all grant dollars. And like I said before, they're all very specific from the feds and the state about how those dollars are spent, so they can't be moved to anything outside that criteria. And like Stockton said earlier, we are going to touch on veterans and medical examiner. I probably don't have it as in-depth as I was planning, since I knew they were going to come back, but hopefully, if you want to talk about them here, I can address some of those issues. You'll see that one of the things that every county in the state has in common is veteran service officers. There is a governing statute that oversees the experience and training of those veteran service officers. You'll see that Brevard has the seventh-largest veteran population in the state, even though I believe we're 10th-largest based on overall general population. And what they do in that office is basically assist veterans in making sure that they are getting all of the claims, pension, and other services that they're entitled to as a veteran of our armed forces. This slide shows you that basically veteran services is totally general fund-supported. About 294,000 supports the county staff, and there's about 40,000 that goes as a transfer to support a veteran service officer down in the city of Palm Bay. Next area program we're going to talk about is community-based organizations, well, I'm sorry, community resources, which CBOs actually sit under. So, CBO is $510,200 in general fund. That is put out as an RFP, which, as Stockton mentioned, we're kind of bumping up against the timetable if we're going to move forward with that. Those RFPs are then reviewed by a community-based volunteer group, a board, and they make their recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. The agencies that are recommended for funding, and if the board approves them, we actually go to contract with. So, they actually have outcomes they have to meet. We have a service reimbursement process, so we don't give a lump sum to an agency. They actually have to, it's a cost reimbursement grant, and they have to actually show that they've done the service to get paid. So, we're actually buying services from the agencies through the CBO process. You can see, based on that leveraging, of that 510,000, there's about 170,000 that the agencies report back that they use to leverage other dollars. And what that means is, our dollars are able to be used by that agency to draw down additional state and federal funds. My understanding is, is if the county dollars go away, so do those leveraged funds that come down from the state and the feds. Every agency, even the ones who do leveraging, are required to do what we call a match. We separate those out. What the match is basically is if they have a program that they say in their budget is going to cost $100,000, they have to come up with 25% of that, or 25,000, from other sources other than the county, which could be in-kind or other partner agencies putting dollars or donations forward. You got the mandates? Okay. The next area or service under community resources, as Jill said, the funding and the dollars for these mandates sit in general government, but the oversight that goes along with those processes still sit with our department. And those are those state unfunded mandates that you see listed there. And then we also have that federal mandate of the Americans with Disabilities Act, and that is actually another county mandate, and we oversee that, and it addresses and impacts all county departments and facilities. Final area under community resources is what we call CBPG, which is Community Development Block Grant. Again, this is a federally funded program. We can do a lot of infrastructure projects with this. We primarily focus on seven areas in the county that the board has identified as strategy areas. And it's really a community-driven process. Those communities, we actually have representatives from, and we do community meetings, and they really drive what they want to see as those infrastructure improvements. And sometimes it's been roads, sometimes it's been high-traffic areas, and it's been speed bumps. So, a lot of it is dependent on the community itself prioritizing. There are, just like with everything that we do in the department, there are specific eligibility requirements that we have to follow. And then I also wanted to touch on the fact that we have two board-approved projects that are being funded through what are called Section 108 loans. That's through HUD, the Housing and Urban Development. And we currently utilize CBG funds to make those loan payments. But I wanted to make sure you were aware that there's a small chance, based on some of the budget priorities that have been put out at the federal level, that CBG, if it does go away, general fund is the payer of last resort, and so, general fund dollars would have to continue to make those loan payments moving forward. Next slide is, again, we tried to do a breakout of what community resources, what their revenue streams are. You'll see there's about 3.5 million in grants. You have the statutory reduction, which everyone does, and then that general fund transfer. And again, that general fund transfer here is encompassing CBOs, Health Department, those other type of projects, as well as we, and this is true of all of our different program areas, we do labor distribution for our different staff. So, we have staff salaries, if you remember from that very first slide, that 1.2 in administrative support. It's kind of distributed out across all of these programs. Next area is our medical examiner. It's another mandate from the state. They review all cremations, burials at sea, do their own investigations, separate from law enforcement, and as you would imagine, all autopsies. One of the things that we're having an issue with as we get to critical needs, a slide further up, is the fact that our doctors, we have two, we have the medical examiner and associate medical examiner, they have been exceeding the Florida standards or practice guidelines on the number of autopsies per year. The guidelines state that you should be, they look at 225 plus or minus 50. And as you can see, the number of autopsies year over year has been increasing. And you'll see 772, 832, 952. And as of today, they've done 295, which is actually more than as of this date last year. So, they're on track to exceed that number again. You'll see, again, the breakout of their budget, primarily 1.4 million of that or so is general fund transfer. They also get some charges for service and some miscellaneous dollars. And those things, charges for service, cremation reviews, medical examiner's able to charge for those to the different funeral homes. And miscellaneous has to do with when we have tissue banks utilize the facility, we get some rent from their usage. Trends and issues. We continue to see a year-over-year increase in the number of residents who are seeking assistance. We're also seeing on the housing and infrastructure side, construction costs are increasing. You'll see something on critical needs that addresses that. And then, again, just the recognition that those grants that we oversee and that we administer really drive the department and our staffing. And then, in critical needs, you're going to, we'll be bringing to you in the next couple of months, some changes to some of our policies, specifically dealing with housing and those programs. Those are going to be changes that have been mandated by our funding sources and/or recommendations that have come from them when they've monitored us, as well as, like I said, the construction costs are increasing. What we're finding is the maximum amount of assistance we can provide is not enough any longer. Our bids are coming in too high, and we're not able to serve, so we're looking at, going to be coming back to you with a request to increase those maximums. We're still not going to be anywhere near what the federal government, what HUD allows for maximums, but we think it's going to get us through this increase in costs. And then, we're, like I had mentioned, with the medical examiner, critical need is another associate medical examiner. And then for each associate, there's usually two techs that are needed for when they work. And then the final item, like I told you was coming, was a request for board action on that CBO agenda item. And you see the three things that are being requested on that agenda item, which is to approve the process, the RFP, and the commitment of funding. And again, like Stockton had said earlier, that's really for the agencies themselves to know where they're going to stand moving forward, if they're even going to have an opportunity to go after those dollars. And I hope I did not go too fast.
Very good. Thank you. We have some cards. Joseph McDowell.
Pleasure to be able to be here and discuss this with you. I'm the Executive Director of Links of Hope. We're one of the agencies that's privileged to receive a grant from CBO, $12,000 a year. We provide 21 weekly classes at the Brevard County Jail, including nine anger management, seven parent education, and five TED preparation classes. A primary objective of our program is to reduce the rate of recidivism. Before programs were generally made available at the Brevard County Jail, the recidivism rate was 80%, meaning eight out of every 10 people who were released came back to jail in the near future. That rate has been reduced to 43%, according to Sheriff Ivey's latest report. The most recent year that I have decent statistics is 2015. And that particular year, 500 inmates were released from jail and did not return. And using an assumption that each inmate costs $65 a day and is there for six weeks, I figure that those 500 who successfully were released from jail saved the county $1,365,000. Now, I have no idea how much we contributed to that, but I can tell you that of our graduates, the recidivism rate was 26%. So, we had, and those 500 who were released have approximately 1,000 children, so you can see the impact that their successful release have made on those families and on our community. One of those who was released testified at one of our recent benefits, and he was talking about how his life had been changed, and he was giving us some credit for that. But what really stuck out for me was when his daughter turned to me and said, "I'm so proud of my dad." And I was thinking, that's what it's all about. All of our agencies contribute to improving the lives of thousands of the citizens of Brevard County. I'm convinced that the money that is spent on these programs is far exceeded by the money that the county saves because these programs are provided. And I would encourage you to continue to support CBO, and I thank you very much for all that you have done for our community in the past. Thank you.
Pamela Sal. Becky Lindstrom.
Hey there. My name's Becky. I'm from the Women's Center. We've gotten a word from CBO for several years now. And I thank you guys for being so diligent, knowing about what you're going to do, making your decisions. I know it's not tough, I mean, it's tough, so-so tough, and you're trying to decide whether to maintain services decrease or increase. Unfortunately, we have to increase our services, and it seems like it's been like that for the past several years, since I've been with the Women's Center. And like you were saying before, the latest crime statistics we have are from 2015. And in 2015, Brevard County had a little over 3,900 incidences of domestic violence. That's an increase of 5.6% over the previous year. There were 282 rapes not associated with domestic violence, and that's a percent change of, percent increase of 36%. It's pretty incredible. So, anyway, the Women's Center helps these women, or men, and then their children. We provide them immediately with a safe house, and then provide advocacy if they need just help trying to get their life back together in an immediate situation and plan for their future. And that's what we use CBO money for. And the past year, we assisted over 2,100 clients. And I think we're good at what we do, and we're well-respected in the community for what we do. We have a strong relationship with Sheriff Ivey and all the police chiefs from Satellite Beach, City of Melbourne, Titusville, as well as the local hospitals. And also, we were just chosen to take on the Sexual Assault Victim Services Program from the State Attorney's Office. Not exactly sure why they felt they couldn't run the program anymore, but we were asked to take that on, and we've been working hard to become certified to do that, and are all successfully navigating that, and we've been monitored and are just kind of waiting for our final approval. So, I know that we do a good job, and are respected in our field. I know you guys really have to look at your numbers, and, you know, work with cities also to try to get funding. And they kind of say, we fill a nice niche between the public sector and private sector in providing services that aren't cost-effective for either the public to do on their own, or the private sector to do on their own. And- And they kind of say we fill a nice niche between the public sector and private sector in providing services that aren't cost-effective for either the public to do on their own or the private sector to do on their own. And so I hope that you can continue to fund us and the programs that we, as a whole in CBO, are providing. And I, also, looking at the large budget of the whole county, and if our $510,000 is there, it's really, really a small percentage, but I know everybody has their own little percentage that they feel is very important. I think the CBO is .04%. And I know that not every adult in the county pays taxes equally, but let's say everybody over 18 does. It equals out to, I think, $1.08 for the whole CBO to be funded, and about 12 cents per person for just the Women's Center if I was just gonna be, think about myself. And I promise you, if any of you came to our safe house, you saw these little kids that have left their home in the middle of the night, or they're trying to find a toy, or trying to find, you know, a new set of clothes, you know, giving them 12 cents, $12, whatever they needed, you know, it wouldn't be a question. And anyway, I appreciate your time. Do you have any questions about the program?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Making these decisions, obviously, is not easy.
I'm glad I'm not you.
And I wish I weren't me either. If we don't fund this, the $510,000, how much did you get?
$60,000.
$60,000.
Well, it was like $59,789.
Okay, let's say $60,000 round numbers.
Yeah.
What are your other, other funding sources?
Well, I know last year, you brought up the fact that we do get funded by United Way and another, a lot of other, we have a lot of sources, which we think is a strong thing to do if, you know, if you're a regular business, you don't want your income just to be based on one thing. So, yep, we get a United Way. United Way vets us very rigorously, and so I feel having those other sources is, is a good thing and a sign of our strength. And I'm just gonna have to work harder to, to keep our program going. It will mean less services are provided, you know, I can't, you know, say any more than that. Less services are provided, yes, I'll still be working hard, you know, as it is, you know, I try to, you know, I probably mesh five to seven different types of funding sources together to try to make it work. So, we'll, we'll keep looking. That's what'll happen.
Well, thank you for all you do for the community.
You're welcome. Anything else? Thanks so much.
Comments from the board? Ian, you're, you want us to either approve or disapprove the process, so we're either going to commit the $510,000 again, or we're not?
Correct.
Okay.
That is the answer.
And then, what's the RFP?
The RFP is a request for proposal, and it's actually the guideline that the agencies are implied to, which tells us about their organizational capacity, it tells us what the budget is, what they're seeking from the county, what the services they're gonna provide. We ask them to give us a statement of need, and it's basically what...
Okay, so do you really need us to approve an RFP? That's, that's your deal?
Well, typically, again, it's part of the process.
Okay, well, we can do that. And then, commitment of funding, aren't we doing that by approving the process if we approve it?
No, 'cause the process is still dependent upon the funds being there at the end of the year.
Okay, so we have to do all three. Okay. Pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chair, are we starting with the CBOs, or are we starting with the budget in total?
Just the CBO, the board action is required tonight because they're under the gun. Don't everybody speak at once.
I'll start. It's not easy. And, you know, I've been, obviously, all of us have been petitioned to keep these funds in place, but I've also been approached by other nonprofits that have either applied for funding and didn't qualify, or say, "Why not me?" So trying to rectify on who deserves the funding, on based on who's able to meet the qualifications and put a nice application packet together. I used to run into this, trying to approve CDBG funding with the City of Palm Bay. So, you know, it's tough looking at this, but it's a half a million dollars. And I think that, you know, you can argue on return on services, and you can argue about matching funds, but regardless of whether or not someone gets our 16 or our $12,000, they may be able to match those funds with fundraising, which is what most agencies do, 'cause lord knows I go to enough fundraisers and I rally the troops to try to raise money for some of these organizations on this list. So I won't be supporting the continued funding of CBO funding because I think that it puts us in an awful position to have to pick and choose who's worthy of these funds, because there's hundreds of nonprofits that could benefit from funding from our general fund. So there I went first. I'll be the bad guy.
How's it feel?
It feels terrible, but it's the right thing to do because it's...
It is. It's, this whole process is difficult. Anyone else wanna weigh in?
Yeah, you know, the way I look at this, we keep calling these as charities and everything, but we're really paying for services. That's really what we're doing. It's a contracting for services, and I don't know, in my business, I look at RFPs a lot, and this thing is so locked in as how, how, how very fair it is for people applying. You have to really prove that you can do this, and that you're not gonna just be taking a handout, that you are going to be doing a lot more where you have to have matching funds. And I think it's interesting, it's, they said at least 25%. Well, some of these go a lot more on matching funds. And also, when you're getting matching funds from United Way, that helps too, that you already have something. But I have to say this, I don't want to be the one that says, "Okay, I am not gonna give senior citizens," and we have a lot of senior citizens, and, and us two are ones. And, but I tell you what, once you go around and you work with Meals on Wheels and some other organizations, and you see these, these people that are, that have no other way to be fed, I mean, I'm as conservative as they come, but boy, I tell you what, I don't want to be the one that says, "I decided to go do a mile of asphalt, or a few miles of asphalt instead of feeding people that need it." And that's a tough call, and I, I'm, I'm not gonna be there. I know, I've seen what some of these organizations do, I've been involved in a lot of them, and I fully believe that we need to look at it from a standpoint as services that we're contracting for. Because what we're doing, I look at things in business, I look at return on investment. A gentleman gets up and talks about, about the jail. Well, there's organizations that help kids stay out of jail, and there's been, there's been data that shows if one person hits the jail at 17 or 18, in their lifetime, it's gonna cost a million dollars to the system. You know, that's return on investment. When you look at putting Meals on Wheels or whatever, when you put $60,000 up and you leverage it to a million dollars, and you're feeding 2,000 or so people a week that are shut-ins that have no other way, that's a return on investment. Because we're gonna see them later on in some other way. It may not be in county taxes, but it's gonna be in state taxes or federal taxes. So, you know, I'm gonna stick with it. I, I believe that community-based organizations do what they need to do, but, and I really like the process because it does delineate very carefully the ones on how they're gonna do this, instead of just asking for money, they have to prove it. And I just believe it's something the community that we have to have. Because it's, one of these things is, if we don't do this, if we don't support those that really are in need, and not the ones who don't want handouts, but the ones who really are in need, who else is gonna do it? So I'm, I'm supporting the CBOs.
Mr. Tobias.
Thanks. Well, I've, I've already, you know, issued my, my suggestion, I think, that got out, out there. And again, I want to reiterate that I want to thank greatly all of the services that are provided by these individuals. I, I agree, they, we provide them, taxpayers provide them with resources, and they provide a service for that resource. However, I believe that these type of organizations are better handled at the home than they are here in Viera. And I don't want to be the individual that picks and chooses which one of these is more worthy than another one, because there are some in here that, that I know very well, and others that, this is the first time that, that I'm seeing them. So I, again, appreciate everything that these organizations and the organizations that we don't fund do for our community. I don't think it would be as great of a community as it is without the services they provide. I just don't want to be the arbiter of other people's resources as to how they're, how they're funded. So I will, my suggestion would be to find other way to spend that little over $510,000. And I know we have a billion-dollar budget, but as you well know, and as Jill has told us many times over, once we start getting down to the green money, the general fund money, and then, once we start getting down to the mandates taken out of it, our billion dollars becomes very, 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 our general fund dollars become very, very precious. So I will be, I will not be in support of the CBO funding.
Ms. Pritchett.
If we were in a critical need period where we're gonna have to vote to remove the charter cap, I would have to find a way not to do this. Here's my struggle with this. If, if we got elderly people that can't take care of theirselves, or kids that can't take care of theirselves, I think we should take care of them. If you have people that just don't feel like taking care of themselves, that's what we need to start weeding out. At the local level, it's a little different. Federal level, it's nuts. What they give out with earned income credit and all this money we're handing out, we've gotta change. And that's gonna have to start happening at the federal level, but, you know, if they would've just wiped that out right now, we'd have a bunch of people right now homeless, and we'd have a bigger problem than just trying to do it over a gradual period of time. So as we're going through these, and this is, this is, this is hard, and you guys have great hearts, and I love hearing what you're having to say, the ones that are getting matching, like I'm looking at the Meals on Wheels, they get to 1 to 11 match. So my guess is, at the upper level, they're saying they want to see the community's gotta dog in the fight, so we come along with something, they're gonna help feed these groups of people too. And, you know, I've, I've done a few of the Meals on Wheels, and it surprises me how many children just do not take care of their parents or their grandparents anymore. And so we, we have a need out there, and if we just stop some of these programs, I can't handle the thought of these elderly people sitting out there without food, or anybody stopping in to see them once a day. And same with children, you know, we've, we've got a massive problem with single households at this time, and we're gonna have to find a way to correct this. And I don't know how to fix all that at that level, but right now, if we've got some kids that we need to take care of, we're gonna have to. So if we, we do this on a different level to where we start weaning some of these things off, I'll, you know, I, I wanna listen to that, but especially the ones that have a match right now that are such big matches like that, I, I think it's responsible for us to look at those things, because if we don't do it as a community, it's gonna cost us a lot more. And the ones that maybe aren't getting matches, maybe we need to look at those and figure out what services they're getting. But you said they have to go through a big process of putting in applications, correct, sir? And you guys really work through these and make sure that they're really spending the money appropriately.
Yes, like, like I mentioned, the, the group that reviews the applications is called our Community Action Board, and it's made up of 15 members when it's fully seated. There are five representatives, one from each commission office, five representatives low-income community, and five representatives of the business community. And they actually go through each of these applications, they score them. I think you have a copy of the application in the agenda item, so you can see the score sheet and the items that they look at, as well as, like I said, once they make their recommendations, that's what comes to the board. So they're, they're the ones who have the contact with the communities, who are looking at what the needs are, who are doing that, basically picking and choosing of, and I hate to call it winners and losers, because depending on the need from year to year, it does change.
Right.
But there, as you can imagine, there have been some ongoing areas that have remained constant with funding, and one of them has been services to the elderly.
So those, those types of aspects, as we're moving through this, is, is really hard not to do. I, I think it's almost something that, that we're gonna have to look at and make a decision on. I think, I think we gotta feed the elderly guys, and I think if there's hungry kids... Because I don't, I go, I go to church, so I know how to tithe, we do all those things, but there's so many people that don't do that on a regular basis, and it's getting less and less, so what do we do? Because we got a society of people that don't take care of their parents, and we got a group of people that just can't take care of their kids. We have a problem. And I, again, I don't know how to fix that at the big level, but I know that we can at least do something here to touch something at this level. So if there's some, some places on here you guys wanna have conversations on, 'cause they don't recognize all of these, but I, I think my take on this is, is I'm gonna have a real hard time just cutting this all the way off. And I think it would be healthy for these entities to start weaning. But Mr. Stockton, we talked about this, 'cause I asked you these questions in private also, and you had mentioned the budget for 2015 and 16 was really big for these, and the year before was also...
Actually, this, the budget was well over, over a million.
It was more than 1516. It was probably prior to '09, that at one point, it was above a million dollars that went to this...
2007, it was $1,088,000.
So I, I wouldn't mind the aspect of us working towards continuing to wean, wean people off and having them find, people need to give, people just need to start giving to people. But, and until we're able to get there, I, I'm not, I'm not willing to just cut this off altogether, so...
Ian, how many organizations qualified last year?
How many qualified, or how many?
How many received?
Oh, how many applications did we receive?
How many received benefits?
Yeah, that was my first question. The second question's gonna be...
That's actually, that's actually what you have in front of you.
Okay, well, I don't have it in front of me.
We, we have what we call our 1617 Proposed Service Report. Those are the agencies that were...
So there's 15, there's 15 on here?
Yes.
Okay. How many applied?
It's not 15 agencies, you're right, because there are some that received funding for two programs, such as Aging Matters, number one, and number two.
Okay, so there's 13, 14.
I think 13 agencies, I believe.
Right, okay, so it's 13. How many applied? Do you know? Do you remember off the top of your head?
I don't remember.
The number I remember, that I remember hearing last year was like 78, and, and so that meant there was like 65 that...
I, I don't believe it was that high.
Wasn't that high.
I think it was somewhere in the twenties.
So it was probably about, if I remember correctly from the spreadsheet, about four agencies that did not receive funding. So it was probably total about four more than what you see here that made it through the process of a, a good application to make it to the CAB.
Okay.
And one of the things that, that CAB has been doing traditionally year over year is, they don't award 100% funding. One of the things that they do is they actually, in their recommendation meeting, which is typically, takes a full day, they actually, I think the last few years, it's been about 80% that they've awarded as a recommendation to the board, to, again, try and stretch those dollars a little further.
Okay, well...
Commissioner Thad May, it was 23.
23?
Yes.
Okay, so 10 didn't get any funding. So what happened to those 10? Do you know?
My, my guess would be that the services that they provided or proposed to do were not provided.
Right, but they didn't go away, they didn't disappear, they just...
The agencies themselves, that I couldn't speak to.
Yeah, okay. Well, I agree that they're not handouts. I, I work with several of these organizations, and I've visited many of the, many others, and they all do really good work. And there is a return on investment here, Mr. Barfield mentioned that. But as a, as a steward of the public monies, I tithe. And I know that a lot of people don't, and it's unfortunate that, that the rest of us, the rest of the people have to, to go and get old, and their kids don't take care of them, and it's tragic, it really is. But at the same time, I'm looking at this from a practical sense, 'cause I can't look at it from a sympathetic sense, 'cause I would have to say, "Let's give them a million But I really have a hard time telling other people that, that don't want to support these organizations, that their government tax dollars need to go towards something that they don't want to voluntarily give to. If everybody in this community gave $10 to you, Ian, and your organization, we'd have more than $500,000. But the fact is, people often don't want to be generous, don't want to give 10 bucks. So does that mean that it falls on the government to make those hard decisions that we have the winners and the losers? We have 10 organizations that don't get funding, and we get... We have 10 organizations that don't get funding, and we get 13 that do. It's a tough, tough call, and I would, I think that at this point in time, I would have to say that if we have a vote tonight, I would have to vote against funding these. And let me finish. If we get to a point in our budget that we have more funds, I would definitely entertain the idea of bringing these, refunding these organizations, but, Mr. Barfield?
Just a suggestion. Instead of not totally voting against this, I think the organizations, if we could do a phase-out, say, over five years, each year, go ahead and set that phase-out, it gives all these organizations enough notice and enough planning where they know, we're not going to have this, so we need to do a lot more fundraising, we need to do whatever we can. That way, we're not, I mean, we're doing a phase-out every year, and we're dropping a percentage of amount of money that's going to be available. It's just something to throw out there. I think that might be, that gives everybody notice, that, you know, it's not going away immediately, but we are...
But I think only some of these are recurring funding, because they still have to apply every year, so they...
Oh, you still apply.
Some of these, obviously, like, and the one, and I go back to like what we were saying earlier, the one we care about the most is feeding the seniors. I mean, and that, that should be a theme of this commission, it should, is a theme of my office, to take care of the seniors, so maybe we find some way else we can help, whether it be personally, whether it be as a commission, as a concerted effort. But there's agencies on here I haven't heard of, there's agencies on here, I got a phone call this afternoon, about one that they believe is misappropriating funds. So, am I going to go dig in their accounting and be the judge of whether or not they're doing the right things with their money? So, again, my comments still stand. I don't know if five-year phase-out is right. Do we dwindle down the funding, or whatever, or do we just make the difficult decision now?
That's what I mean, just cut the funding equally every year.
But that's assuming that all five, all of these agencies for the next five years...
They have to apply. They may, it may not be, but only five organizations or whatever get it. It has to go by their evaluation process and their RFPs, so...
Well, if we did it with no new agencies can apply, we have these ones, if they don't reapply, we just absorb that money and then still do a...
They'll probably all apply if they know the funding's there and it's automatically funded.
Well, yeah, well, unless they go out of business, and then there's a 20% reduction through the next five years.
I don't know. I think it's, I'd rather go the hard way and make the decision now to, then it's not, you know, 75 phone calls.
We have one more speaker, and we're going to make a decision, because we have another meeting to go to. Cindy Fleischmeyer?
I want to read something I'm with, Aging Matters, and you've been talking about the numbers. So, I have the numbers to give to you, just for Meals on Wheels. Aging Matters was awarded $60,000 of CBO funding that leveraged $540,000 for Meals on Wheels and Seniors at Lunch, and that was last year. A combination of CBO and United Way funds are what we use for the match. The total federal grant for this program is $1,036,553. That's our federal money, requiring a total match of $115,173. This is accomplished by using your $60,000 of CBO and $55,173 of United Way. So, it gives you a good idea of what kind of money we're talking about, just for our Lot of money, lot of return. It leveraged $540,000 for this county. So, any questions on that?
If this funding goes away, does that mean you lose $1 million in funding for the seniors next year? And how many seniors is that going to...
That will impact about 2,500 seniors who receive a meal, one meal five days a week. If we lose the federal funding this year, which is on the chopping block, you all are aware of that, if we lose the CDVG, which is on the chopping block right now with the federal government, if we lose CBO, there will no longer be Meals on Wheels. I just had a $125,000 fundraiser. I spend that in less than a half a year on meals.
Thank you, Cindy. Pleasure of the board.
I'll make the motion. Commissioner Isnardi started it, so I'll make the motion to direction of staff to defund the CBOs from our, whatever, 17, 18 budget.
I'll second.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Tobias, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. We have discussion.
Again, I would like to consider doing a phase-out on it. That's where I leave it. I think it's unfair to do this when you don't give any notice, any warning, and all of a sudden, we're coming up into a new budget, and they're going to have to scramble to figure out how they're going to do this. So, that's my take. So, I'm against this motion.
And they still have to apply every year anyway, so there's no guarantee of funding every year.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a comment, too. I would rather do some type of phase-out. You have some of these entities looking at a million dollars, we're about to cut them, even though we're only giving them $92,000. So, I don't, I think this is just a quick decision on the fly here. If nothing else, I think we should bring this back at the next meeting for discussion before we just affect this many people.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Fails 3-2. We can, do we, do you want to do a motion for, want to make another motion for the phase-out?
Okay. Yeah, I'll motion, make a motion that we do a five-year phase-out equally in funding, beginning this next budget, and to keep everything the same as your RFP goes, your whole process, all that stays the same, but we'll do gradual phase-out.
Was that like reducing, if you're at $500,000, now reducing it by 100 every year?
One-fifth every...
Okay.
Second for discussion. Can we also put in there that if an entity quits receiving funds, that we just go ahead and absorb back into the general fund and don't pick up any new projects? It's like if one of these guys decide they don't need funding anymore, they don't reapply...
No, it's not just these. Anybody, anybody applies.
Just for clarification, are you talking about closing the process and only having these 13 agencies being able to apply?
No, you weren't talking about that.
Yeah, okay. There were a few years that that actually happened.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Barfield, a second by Commissioner Isnardi. I'm sorry, Pritchett. To phase-out the funding, 20% each year, $100,000 each year, process would remain the same. The charities and organizations would make the same applications. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Pass is 3-2.
And just for clarification, so, the request in this agenda item was 510-200. With this, it's going to be 408-160 for 17, 18, which is a 20% reduction.
Okay, we need to adjourn this meeting.
Mr., can we, can we bring back, we didn't have time to talk about HHS, HHS's budget. I've given some suggestions. Can we reserve the time as it opens to bring those up?
Absolutely.
And you had them in front of you, so we can go from there.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.